Good evening, welcome to this Monday, October 19th, 2015 Mercer Island City Council Meeting. Alec, you call the roll.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Braun.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Searle.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Potmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grous.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here, thank you very much. We first have a piece of special business, recognition of Let's Move campaign partners, and for that I turn it over to Debbie Burtland.
Great, thanks. I have a big box of plaques I have to grab, so just a second. So, tonight we're extremely pleased to recognize many of our community partners who supported the city of Mercer Island in achieving the five gold medals in the Let's Move initiative. So, as many of you know, this is a movement, an initiative that was sponsored by First Lady Michelle Obama, recognizing the importance of healthy lifestyle, healthy eating in our kids, and in the case of Mercer Island, we certainly expanded that to the community as a whole. So Diane Mortensen and I were honored to go to Washington DC and receive this award on behalf of the city. We were one of 52 cities and counties out of more than 500 across the country who achieved this milestone recognition. But as we said, what was really remarkable in being there with the counterparts, the other 49, was that they quite often spoke about what they, the city, or what they, the community, did. And what Diane and I were able to talk about is what everybody within our community did. So it was far more focused on the amazing group of people on the network that have been committed to achieving these objectives. So it's very much a community versus a city award. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call up some of our, or actually all of our receiving organizations. I know we have some people present here today. Not all could make it. But I'm going to start out first with Sharon Perez and the Mercer Island Food Revolution. And I don't know, did any of you go to the Food Revolution dinner?
Yeah.
Did you mean how much Thursday night? It was amazing, how many people?
Four hundred.
Four hundred people, sponsored by Let's Move and everything else. It was an absolutely amazing event, and my kids, for those of you who weren't there, came home and started reading labels, which I found out some of their favorites maybe won't be their favorites for long. But anyway, so thanks so much. Thanks to the team. Hang up. I'll get your hand over. Do a little time. Hang up here. Can you hear me? Okay, great. So next award goes to Mercer Island Library, Kirsten Corney. Okay, next is my Mercer Island Erin Siriani. Is she here tonight? Okay, can't make it. Okay, we have Strom Jewish Community Center and Ken DiRamondo. Make sure we got the right one. Says Mercer Island Parks and Act, that doesn't seem quite right. And my Mercer Island, okay. I can see this. Thanks so much. Clearly, I'm not ready for the Academy Awards or anything. Okay, and then next that we have on the list is the Fresh Start gal, Michelle Cocknell. She here tonight? Okay, we'll give her a round of applause. Then we have Mary Way Poole, Alice Godfrey. Thanks so much. Mercer Island Pediatrics. Do we have anyone here tonight from Mercer Island Pediatrics? Doesn't seem so good. Go ahead and give them a round of applause. We have the Mercer Island Preschool Association. Anyone from MIPA? They're probably all out taking donations for the Tourist Walk coming up early November, November 7th. Okay, little public announcement there. The next one is the Mercer Island School District. Do we have anyone here from the district to accept this award? Nope, but we'll give them a round of applause. And then the final one is to the Mercer Island Boys and Girls Club. Anybody here from Boys and Girls Club? So let me just take a quick moment then to show you all the plaque. It's actually beautiful. It's a picture of First Lady Michelle Obama, who was the one who gave the keynote address, which is great. And the plaque itself says, "Recognition of Your Exemplary Partnership with the City of Mercer Island to Raise Awareness for Healthy Lifestyle Through Good Nutrition and Physical Activity." So, anyway, again, it was a tremendous experience. We have a next set of goals and objectives that we've been challenged with, and I'm sure that the Parks and Act team and various other community organizations will be excited to pursue those as well. It's truly a testament to the exceptional community that we have and the ongoing and great work that you've all been conducting. So thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. That was great. We come to appearances, moment when anyone may address the council on any issue you choose. You have three minutes to do that. Come up to the podium, give your name, address. General rules, be civil. Detailed rules on the back wall. Let's begin.
My name is John McPherson. I've lived on the island for 30 years. My home address is 4503 90th Avenue Southeast, and what I want to address is about the proposed MICA Center at the park. I've written it down so it can be a brief. On the proposed center building for Mercer, the Arts Center building for Mercerdale Park, is the city council's intent to deceive the people of Mercer Island as to the actual impact that the proposed MICA building will have on the Mercerdale Park? If this building, the MICA building, were to be placed upon the recycling center property, as a number of the illustrations show, it can only be a maximum size of 8,568 square feet. I measured that property today. The proposed 38,000 square foot building is 29,432 square feet larger than illustrated, and therefore my eyes shows an attempt to deceive. In fact, the proposed building at 38,000 square feet is 7,400 square feet larger than the QFC at the north end of the island, which is 30,600 square feet. I measured that today. And by the way, I do have experience in measuring buildings. I have little machines and so forth. As to the parking at the proposed building, the QFC, the City Hall, the Mercer Island Community Center, and the island churches all have parking at least the size of the building footprint. As there is no comparable parking allotted for this building, there is only one place from which it can come, that is even more of Mercerdale Park, or to commandeer the city streets. That is another 38,000 square feet, making it larger than the entire north end QFC, including its parking. I'm asking this city council to be honest before the citizens of Mercer Island, and lay before the citizens of this community, the totality of this project geared for a small special interest group, and put before the community at large, an advisory vote of the people, so that the citizens of Mercer Island can decide before going forward with this ill-advised project, which will essentially give away a large piece of our precious parkland worth an estimated value of $15 million for a rent of $1 a year. Again, is it the city's council's intent to deceive the citizens of Mercer Island to the benefit of some special interest group, the real costs and scope of this project? I, for one, a resident of Mercer Island for 30 years, am making it known to this city council that I'm against such back dealings and deceptions, and I'm against such largesse at the cost of the people of Mercer Island, and will vote to keep our parks intact and in perpetuity.
And I'll ask you to wrap up. So your three minutes is up.
I will wrap up. I, for one, a resident of Mercer Island for 30 years, making it known to this city council that I'm against such back dealings and deceptions, and I'm against such largesse at the cost of the people of Mercer Island, and will vote to keep our parks intact and in perpetuity, both at the coming election and in the future. Now will you please address the questions asked?
Thank you. Welcome, Ben.
My name is Ben Pariser, and I live at 3861 80th Avenue Southeast with my wife and two young children. I own two businesses with offices in Mercer Island, and I am a board member of MICA. I'd like to start out by thanking the Mercer Island City Council members for their vision and support over the past two years to ensure the success of MICA. We've made a tremendous progress, but there's still work to be done. Recently, it seems there have been a concerted effort to spread misinformation about MICA, and I'd like to clear up the air on a few salient points. First, construction that not began until MICA has received contributions, pledges, or financing equal to 100% of the construction costs. Second, the MICA facility will not encroach on the existing Mercerdale Park uses or the farmers market. Lastly, parking is a concern of everyone's, and MICA is committed to identifying and securing parking prior to the start of construction. Youth Theatre Northwest is a treasured institution indigenous to Mercer Island, and will be anchor tenant of MICA. In addition to supporting Youth Theatre Northwest, MICA will provide activities and services for senior citizens as well as the general public to enjoy. MICA will become an active part of the Mercer Island Town Center seven days a week. Thank you again, councilmembers, for your courage and willingness to work collaboratively with MICA and the greater Mercer Island community to bring this grand vision to life.
Thank you. Welcome.
So, thank you. My name is Christina Cruthers. This is my daughter Elena Skurgadis. We live at 4805 84th Avenue Southeast on Mercer Island, and I'm here because I'm a youth theater parent and a board member. My children have been attending Youth Theatre Northwest classes and been a part of Youth Theatre Northwest productions for the last five years. And so I'm here to voice my support of Youth Theatre Northwest and of MICA, the future home of Youth Theatre Northwest. Without MICA at the former recycle center, there is no future home for Youth Theatre Northwest on Mercer Island. So I think people need to understand that. The reason we have searched hard for another location, and that search has been exhaustive, and we're happy to share more details with those who remain unconvinced. So you may be asking, why should people of Mercer Island support MICA at the former recycle center? And I firmly believe it's because of what MICA will bring to the community, for all of the community, young and old alike, but especially for our children. My daughter was telling me before coming here that she didn't understand why some people didn't support MICA, and that going to Youth Theatre Northwest is the best part of her day. So we have public space dedicated to sports on Mercer Island, including softball, soccer, and football fields. So why can't we support the use of public space for the arts and arts education, particularly at that location at the former recycle center at Mercerdale Park? It's the perfect location to bring the arts and the community together. So allowing MICA to proceed means that we will have a future home for Mercer Island's beloved youth theater on Mercer Island and maintain a treasured community resource for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And was it Elena?
Elena.
Elena here?
Yeah, Elena.
I'm glad you came along. Your mom was looking a little nervous.
Yes, she does the theater, I don't.
Thank you. My name is Robin Parkinson. I live at 3870 83rd Avenue Southeast. I've been a Mercer Island resident for over 20 years, and I have three theater kids. I have two, I have twins who are in ninth grade, and I have an eighth grader, and between them, I actually don't know, let's see, they've done 13, 12, and 12 productions at Youth Theatre Northwest. They've been in classes there since they were three. It is their second home. They would be here tonight. In fact, I am here representing my kids, because they could not be in rehearsals, for It's a Wonderful Life. If you're not going to, you should go see it. It's going to be amazing production. What I'd like to say is, I, as a resident for so long and with three kids in the school district, my kids don't do, I mean, they do sports. They're theater kids. This is what they do. The school district does not properly support the arts. There's not this kind of organization that is truly meaningful for the kids anywhere else, and it is a treasure on this island. It's a treasure for my kids, it's a treasure for everybody. And I think one of the reasons that you don't see the kind of elementary school and middle school productions, and even high school productions that you might see normally, is because this community has this resource. It's not a special interest group. Youth Theater serves over 2,000 kids a year, and it's all kids. Theater by kids, for kids. And to call that a special interest group is kind of odd. Anyway, I don't think that the arts is a special interest group. I think that this community is actually pretty far behind in supporting the arts as other communities have. Bellevue has a theater, Redmond has a theater. I was just, Bainbridge Island City Council, right next door to their City Hall, is a theater. And Mercer Island should be supporting the theater in the same way that these other communities have. Having public space for theater, having a public space for people who are in this community to be able to utilize it, not just Youth Theatre Northwest, is a value that this community needs to spend more time and energy devoting itself to. And that's a value that goes beyond simply, you know, supporting a special interest group. It's something that you guys need to do a better job of, frankly. So I'm going to end it early. I think that's all I have to say. There we go. That's for Katie, Jeff, and Molly Parkinson.
Thank you. Viril, I'm sorry, I wasn't reading your lip.
I was just trying to be rude. We were just trying to get people who wanted to come in to come in. Hi, my name is Viril Hill, and I live at 8316 Southeast 57th Street on Mercer Island for the best 17 years. And I'll quote Stephen Sondheim, my favorite musical theater composer. Art isn't easy, any way you look at it. I want to talk about deception tonight. Deception is not what Mike is in the business of doing, despite what the previous gentleman said. Deception really comes from miscommunication and the misstatement of facts. So what I'd like to do is correct some misstatements of facts that not just have happened in the past 20 minutes, but also happen on social media and in other forums, and we see them over and over again. So allow me just a minute of your time to correct those for the record. We're deceiving people about the impact. MICA is a 24,460 square foot facility. The size of the property is known, it's on our website, anyone can go and see it. It's two stories tall. So the fact that, the idea that it would be twice as big as QFC or whatever the gentleman said, I probably got that wrong, but the footprint and the square footage is the fact that it's a two-story building, not a one-story building. So, you know, if you want to measure up, I think you'll come up with different numbers. Parking's a known issue. My fellow board member talked about that. We are working on that solution. We're confident we'll get a solution. I'm not going to speculate, like the other gentleman did, that we would require more of the park for parking. That's jumping to an erroneous conclusion. We would never do that. As a matter of fact, we've gone out of our way in our designs to make sure that MICA does not encroach on the existing use of the park in any way, shape, and form in any of the designs, and it's been that way since day one. This is not a special interest group. Has anyone been to All Island Band Night last Friday night? If you were there, you would have seen 800 5th through 12th graders and their parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and brothers and sisters, thousands of music families celebrating the arts. There are thousands of youth theater families and kids who attend the shows at YTN. There are hundreds of dance kids and families. A special interest group? That's no more than saying that soccer, lacrosse, baseball, football, and soccer are special interest groups on this island. It is part of who we are as a community and part of what we do, to raise our kids and give them a strong place to grow. Rent is only a small part of the story, you all know that. The dollar is only a piece of the total value that we're providing to the city. The benefits are well-known, we've stated them here before. There's no back dealing, okay? There's no deceptions. It's time to be bold, it's time to take action for our kids, our teens, our families, and our seniors. It's time to give MICA the chance to go to the community and let them vote with their wallets to support us and build a great facility for Mercer Island. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome out.
Al Hittbert, 4005 294th Avenue, Mercer Island. This is the fifth time I've been before you on a similar and related issue. The issue tonight is related to pickleball, as you all know it will be, but it's slightly different in the sense that, over the last couple of weeks, I've noticed there's been somewhat of a debate going on about our being accused of being elitists. So let me tell you why that has a little standing among the communities around us. If you were a Mercer Island resident, and you went to play pickleball, and you were not a senior, you paid $3.25. If you came from off-island, you paid $4.25. You may not think that's a big deal, and you may think that's okay because the Mercer Island just pays taxes. We are the only venue in all of King County that differentiates between the residents coming to play and the non-residents coming to play. And the people that come from off-island, and there are more of the people off-island than are on-island that come to play, they feel that, and that contributes this feeling of elitism that we have. The other issues, and I have a few more minutes to talk about, is the fact that, same when I've been here before, and that is, the way the pickleball community is treated at the community center. A few weeks ago, I think I wrote a note to you that I spoken to the people that come and take us off the court to 2 o'clock exactly, whether we're in the middle of a game or not, and I've asked that, hey, can we talk to people and just let us finish the game, et cetera? But no. And the point is, that in four times that I've come to talk to you, nobody has come to talk to me or any of our representatives to see if we can work out a deal that's better, not only for the pickleball players, but for the community center. Two weeks ago, when we did have, when I spoke to the folks upstairs, and I did talk them into coming down and setting up the nets on the half of the court that was totally not being used, the word got around that that happened, and the next, this is on a Friday when we have half the gym. The next Friday, the very next Friday, there were 30 people that came because the word got around that we would have that many courts on that Friday. Well, last Friday, they wouldn't do it, and we had 14 people standing around because they only let us have half the gym. That's not friendly, and that's contributing to this feeling of elitism. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome in.
Good evening, council. You've heard me speak a lot. So today, actually, I'm putting on my actor's hat, and I'm reading a letter from the Russian Chamber Music Foundation of Seattle. MICA has a real opportunity of bringing a number of organizations together, and this organization could not make it tonight as they are teaching students, but they asked me to read this letter. Dear Mercer Island City Council, when our artistic director, Dr. Natalia Agavia, told us about MICA a year ago, everyone here at the Russian Chamber Music Foundation of Seattle has been exceedingly excited. We started eight years ago as a classical music nonprofit. Since our inception, we have organized a multitude of concerts every year, bringing guest musicians of the highest caliber from places as far as Moscow, Berlin, and Vienna. Not only do we bring exceptional local and global artists to perform unique programs, but we also host an annual classical piano competition here on Mercer Island that attracts many of the Northwest's most talented youth. In essence, we have accomplished much of what our doctor has set out to do since starting our organization in 2007. Yet, we are missing one big piece, a place to call home. This is where MICA comes in. We have been fortunate to be one of a handful of organizations that will be calling MICA our home. This will revolutionize our organization, providing us with opportunities that will allow us to reach our potential in giving back to the community that we serve. Arguably, the most important feature of MICA is not the world-class facilities or exceptional architecture, but it is the idea that MICA will be at the heart of all art on Mercer Island. On the island, we have pride in our art and countless arts organization. Yet, as an arts organization, we feel it is tough to feel connected with others since we are so spread out. With the inception of MICA, a true sense of togetherness will arise in the community that has not been seen before. It will be a place where every major arts organization will come together and create new connections and new friendships. This will in turn bring the people of Mercer Island closer together and provide them with collaborations that hadn't even been thought of in the past. This sense of togetherness is what MICA is truly about. We strongly support the proposed location at the former recycling center. The central location and connection to public parkland will energize the town center and inspire many collaborative opportunities. Those of us at the Russian Chamber Music Foundation of Seattle would like to ask for your support for MICA and help bring the people of Mercer Island even closer together. Your best, Cyrus Fine, President of the Russian Chamber Music Foundation of Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome Sue.
Good evening. I'm Sue Sherwood. I live at 7444 West Mercer Way for 36 years. Planning for the future is challenging for all of us, you as our elected city leadership, and for citizens engaged in grassroots efforts, all of us hoping to enhance our community. If we were canvassing our Mercer Island population today, my guess is the majority would share that the quality of our school rules was a primary factor in settling on the island. Parents, they all want a fine education for their children. It's what I've heard from my clients over and over and over again for 35 years. As we all know, a fine education comes in many forms and dimensions. Arts education, let it be music, theater, or fine art, immerses our young people in a special kind of mind and imagination expansion and discipline that's critical for lifelong learning. The Mercer Island Center for the Arts has the potential to change the cultural landscape of our community, creating arts education and enrichment for young and for old. They say it takes a village to raise a child. With MICA, let us... With MICA, let us all be that village. Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm.
Good evening. Robert Thorpe, property owner at 5800 West Mercer Way since 1971. And having been involved in the staff for five years, I am the only one with certified planner. One of my past roles was president of the Puget Sound Chapter of Planners. And planners every year have to go through a long ethics training. You have to get ethics credits every year to continue to be certified. So there's an old saying about the knock on the door and somebody doesn't speak. I think somebody needs to speak for the stakeholders of the downtown center plan and particularly the planning commission members and design commissioners. They are not only going to their meetings, they're going to these. They gave long hours. They worked very hard, and there were honest differences. I was there. I did not ask to be on that plan because I was on the staff when two plans were created, when design commission had served on three panels. I felt it was good to be an objection person, so I read it. A lot of good things. So I can argue that some of the pathways should be on the south side of McDonald's or on the north side. They should be not take all the land from Wright-Age and Downzone, Wright-Age and Farmers and, and the King property. And there's little tweaks you could do. I'm also, as a director for the master builders, you're going to see the largest building agency in the United States. They're going to come in and say, keep the affordable housing option, keep off-street parking, keep the plazas on the new projects, keep that in there. But I think these people did a very good job. I was really taken back. It may be the silly season that people have forgotten their manners and have forgotten their mothers taught them manners, but there were three people that spoke that were so disparaging of that group and their integrity that I was just really put off. I thought, I've been on this island for a long time. I've been in the transits. I work, see how hard you work. I know how hard those design commission members. But the three people that spoke that disparaged this thing, you know, it really upset me because I only have a bachelor's in architecture and business and economics and two masters. But, you know, two people spoke about their MBAs and one spoke about their PhD. You know, I just came away saying, where are their ethics? These people work this hard. What is your gain by cutting the knees out from under these people? And I got to say to these people, these three people that spoke, I think they should not be emphasizing their PhDs and their MBAs and all their business experience. They ought to be emphasizing their BS degrees. Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm.
Thank you, Robert. I do have a BS degree and a BA degree. I've been saying for nearly two decades that the council should represent Mercer Island, but that hasn't been happening. I think MICA is a good example. They're terrified of a vote because they know that islanders don't support them, that they are a special interest, taking the park for their special interest. That's why they're coming here. Let's have an advisory vote and see if they have any support. But what I'm here to talk to tonight is about transportation because I don't think we're being properly represented. And as Alan Merkel used to say, I think we're getting hosed. Some examples are the parking garage on open space that the council is pushing. We're going to lose SOV access on I-90 because our SOV access to two lanes is going to be pushed to one lane. We'll go below 45 miles an hour and kicked out. The bus turnaround, the mayor said that Sound Transit expected, we say, ghost pound sand, but we were for it anyway. There's no Mercer Island, only parking spaces, and we've lost our local bus service from King County Metro. So I don't think things are going well. The mayor, as I quoted last time, told a story of how in coming here from California, he heard that we were elitists and snobby. And I'm not saying that he thought we were elitist and snobby. I'm saying that this has become one of his high priorities to prove to everybody else we're not. And I think that's one of the reasons, at least, why we're losing all of our, we don't have a strong, you know, voice for us, and we are losing our, our, the privileges that we have. In 2005, there was an October surprise when Dan Grous was running against Lisa Beldon. She was winning and won, was winning in the first election returns. But right then in October, they came up with a, that there is an agreement now that we get access, SOV access. And this council needs the support of, it's the regional leaders like Dow, Constantine, and Claudia that like this council, not Mercer Islanders who are working for the county. They're not working for Mercer Islanders. Sound Transit is meeting on the 22nd to discuss options, and I'm afraid of another October surprise where they're going to come up with something, maybe they'll abandon the bus turnaround, and then they'll say, well, look how it is, you know, how great it is that when we cooperate with the regional leaders that we get something. We shouldn't be talking about the bus turnaround anyway. We're only doing that, as the mayor said, because we asked them to continue to do it. So all I'm saying is that, that we need to start working, that we need a group that works for us, and it's the regional leaders who want this council to continue. Thank you.
Malcolm.
Hello. Hi, I'm John Gordon Hill, 8914 Southeast 56th Street. I am the president of MICA. And I would just like to take a moment as we approach the election season and all of that and everything to thank you. Nobody stands up and thanks you. You guys have a tough job, and you wade through a lot of material, and you do the heavy lifting, and you try your best to figure out what's best for this community. And I want to know, want you to know that it's appreciated. Obviously, I don't always agree with everything that's done, but it doesn't, it's not really the point. The point is that you do your research, you do your work, you do the heavy lifting, and you make decisions. That's what being a city councilor person is about. Some people have asserted that somehow you don't represent the island, but many of you have stood for election several times and have gotten voted in. I don't know how else in a democracy we decide who represents us but that. And I want to thank you for the courage that you have shown and also, in the case of MICA, for standing up for the fact that we have a site that was selected with the process. It works, and you know the particulars about it, and you have stood up to back that. We appreciate it. I wish you all the best in the election season. Take care, and thank you for your service.
Malcolm.
My name is Paramita Mukherjee, and I live at 8116 Southeast 73rd Street. And I'm not a youth theater board member. I'm just a parent. I have a son who's a six-year-old who doesn't know life beyond youth theater. And he started at six, and he's done several shows there, and he couldn't come today because he just broke his leg and he's in crutches. And I asked him, what would life be if, you know, you know, it's possible that youth theater may not exist? And he was like, I can't even think about that. Why wouldn't we have it? It's hard to explain to a kid that we may lose it. And I just, and I'm a new resident here too, and we've been here coming to this place for youth theater even before that. And I think it's a treasure that Mercer Island has, and it'd be sad to lose it. Thank you.
Thank you, and a speedy recovery to your son. Anyone else? All right. With that, I close public comments. Thank you. We will move to consent calendar. We have payables and payroll. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I need to accept the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Remove to regular business. First item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5122, I-90 Loss of Mobility Negotiations Status Report. City Manager Noel Tree.
Yes, thank you. While we, I'll pull up, I only have one slide, which is really just the agenda for this portion of tonight's meeting. First, we're going to get a report from Sound Transit on the recently completed Listening Tour, and then I will just talk very briefly after that about the Guiding Principles document that we put together to help guide our negotiation process and a few words about next steps. So we're joined tonight by Eric Beckman and Ron Lewis from Sound Transit. I will ask, I think Eric's going to come up and make a presentation on the Listening Tour. As a reminder, in your packet is a document, a lengthy document that catalogs all the input that was received. Eric will speak a little bit to that as well as other elements of the Listening Tour.
Eric. Thank you. Pleasure to be here. So we have concluded the Listening Tour. There was one public open house at the community center. We had about 215 folks show up for that, three drop-in sessions, another 49 people over those three drop-in sessions. Those were scattered through the island, covering both the north and south end. To date, we have received 95 responses from our online survey, 43 comment cards that were gathered up at the open house, additional 14 comments from the flip charts that were around the room, 14 letters and emails that have come in over that period of time, and 33 speakers that stood up and spoke at the open house. We had active engagement from Washington State DOT. Lynn Peterson sat throughout the public open house, right there in the front row, also from King County Metro, notably from city Mercer Island staff and council, all well-attended all the meetings. As Noel mentioned, your packet is the first draft of the matrix of all the comments we heard. I think it's some 14 pages at this point. We're continuing to populate that as information comes to us. We have now full transcript of all the spoken comments at the open house, and all that material will be posted online by the end of this week, by this Friday. We will continue, as we have in the past, to make those links available to the city to also link that off the city's homepage as well for transparency and availability to all. Sort of some general observations in sort of as we've gone through this Listening Tour, is no surprise to anybody on the council. It's a very engaged community and, not surprisingly, a diverse number of viewpoints. And some of those are very geographic-centric, depending on whether you live in the south end of the island in the lakes, for example, or the north end, where your particular interests are around mobility, both on the island and around the island. I'd say there's a genuine sense of anxiety out there from the public, and I know that here representing Sound Transit on East Link and the East Link Project and Mercer Island Station, that is only one of the things that faces city residents and, as witnessed by public testimony tonight, and a number of other issues that have been ongoing over the last year or two years. So I guess that is to say that all feeds in, and we need to be respectful of that, you know, sort of the backdrop for the number of things in a relatively small community that are all happening almost simultaneously, it may seem like. Third sort of general observation is there's a lot of misinformation or partial information. I think some of this is testimony to how long the development process it is for a major project like this. East Link is nearly a $4 billion project. It's been in the works for nearly a decade. Sometimes those of us who are working on these projects, we tend to forget that that information isn't at the forefront of everybody's brain, and so I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that information continues to be out there and readily available to all. I think, so I think that's one of the things that we'll take on, you know, sort of that continuing education and making sure that information's out there. As we go through what's about 200 individual comments, and so some letters may have had multiple comments on multiple subjects, we're seeing that sort of break into kind of four major themes. One of those around access to I-90 and sort of HOV lane management and general I-90 management. Second of those is on-island traffic circulation, both motorized and non-motorized. Lot of concern and questions about pedestrians and bicyclists as well as vehicular circulation. Third major is really around parking and access to East Link when that project's up and running. Fourth is the bus intercept and how that's being portrayed and designed. And then sort of a fifth general category falls into what I call other, in other A and other B. So the A part of that is some genuine questions around noise and light and glare and sort of the general environmental concerns that I think we have answers for, and so that's a matter of getting that information back out in front of people. The other category of other are probably things that really aren't open for consideration at this point in terms of East Link alignment and the station location and even a fair amount of discussion around technology. You know, in sort of candid transparency, you know, Light Rail has been voted on, litigated, and decided, and that is the technology that we're taking forward here. And so it's more about making sure that fits the best and most appropriate within the community, and that's really where the energy needs to go as we move forward. So in thinking about next steps here, we, there has been some initial dialogue between the city and Sound Transit and our other partners, DOT and King County Metro. We'd hope to have a more fully developed set of next steps by tonight. There's still some work to do in that regard. DOT in particular is working to bring some additional staff resources onboard so they can be at the forefront and at the table, particularly around the issues regarding I-90. So when we're beginning the presentation, I will be giving a presentation to the Sound Transit Board this Thursday with a similar nature to what we're doing here tonight. There is no October surprise. There's no deal cooked up. This is merely our commitment to a process to get to resolution on each of these major issues in time to keep the East Link Project moving forward. So there, as I said, there has been some collaboration amongst the parties already. We hope to flesh out that next steps and hopefully be reporting back to this body and the Sound Transit Board sometime in the November timeframe, I think this is the goal right now, and really a firm commitment of what those steps are, to whom that action is assigned, and definitive schedule. We're quite pleased with the amount of activity over the last month or so. I mean, we feel like a lot of energy's been put into this. We need to continue that momentum. We're on a very definitive timeline, I think, for all the parties to get this resolved in a timely manner and not let it continue to languish. But from Sound Transit's perspective, we are fully committed to things on the bus intercept and our discussion in King County Metro, to really going back to square one, to thinking about what that split of buses is between Mercer Island and South Bellevue, for example, and if that bus intercept is still a concept that moves forward, how to minimize that impact to the community, commit to something, there's zero additional buses through the town center, but really starting back at square one. While we've done a lot of this work, we want to be very transparent with, about it, keep the public very engaged throughout as we move forward with it. Parking, obviously, we're committed to the whole myriad of potential solutions there, from additional parking capacity to what I will term preferential access for Mercer Islanders and internal Sound Transit really getting some of our folks to think a little more creative about that and sort of approach this with a fresh set of eyes and ears and see if we can answer some of these things that people have said no or impossible before that there might be a different way to look at it. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Vincent.
Eric, thanks for your presentation. Other question regarding this bus intercept, I'm actually pleased to hear you say that when we, Sound Transit publicly is going back to square one and looking at the possibility of South Bellevue or weighing the differences. So the question is, what would tip Sound Transit's decision to favor South Bellevue? What are the factors that you folks are looking at?
So first, a little grounding on that. Right now, the current concept, abandoned or not, does include a certain amount of the intercept at South Bellevue and a certain amount of it at Mercer Island. I think the factors that we really look at is the capacity, is sort of the physical capacity of those two locations, how to minimize overall trip time for the users, but then, more importantly, where it's most appropriate for that activity to happen.
Would you mind elaborating on that last part? I didn't quite understand what that meant.
So, you know, I'm a little bit biased because I'm a Mercer Island resident myself, but looking at, in terms of where that's most appropriate, looking at the circulation of the buses in and out of both of those facilities. to the traveling public, in particular, you know, as the concepts on Mercer Island in particular, as we went through, I think it's five different scenarios and numerous other scenarios that even may delight a day. If that bus circulation can be done in such a way that is no more impactful than the current bus circulation on the island, or even less impactful in terms of turning movements and conflicting moments between those buses and cars, and really measuring that between those two facilities. And more importantly, looking at what the travel time impact is for the user of the system, is sort of a hypothetical, you look at somebody working in downtown and living in Sammamish, for example, and having to use the train and the bus to get from work to home and how you, that overall trip time. And when you look at Bellevue, that has some advantages because it's more reliable, because more of that trip is on the light rail system as opposed to on the bus system. And so, that, well, it may have a somewhat of a time penalty, it has greater reliability. And so those two factors have to sort of be balanced out when you look at that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and this might just be a point for me to jump in. As Eric mentioned, we've already had some pretty good discussions between the city and Sound Transit about what are the, what are the issues and what needs to happen to sort the issues out. One of the things that's been in our preliminary documents in terms of sorting things out is for a study to be conducted, what are the alternatives to locating a bus intercept on Mercer Island, and to document what that looks like, where it could go, how it would work. That study, of course, hasn't been done yet, and it's still part of our negotiation as to getting that done, but that is something that's active, that we're actively pushing for and hope to see in the next round of documents. And that just sort of, I'll just throw in a couple more things about next steps following what Eric mentioned. And we have started discussions. We're using the input from the listening tour to sort of put together a list of what are the issues, and then go from there as to what kind of actions can be taken to try and sort those out. The frustrating piece has been that WashDOT has not been an active participant. We're hopeful that they are now bringing someone on to represent them in this negotiation, but so far they've been fairly absent, and that's probably the main reason we don't have a more thorough document for you to look at just yet, but we hope that that can be done by November. But again, bus intercept and where it could go instead of here is part of what needs to get analyzed.
Mike.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Eric. So, I have a couple comments and a question. I would beware of those who watch this, is it's not just zero buses through the town center. That's not good enough, if you will. There's real concern about the bus traffic along Eightieth and Twenty-Seventh, that whole northern end. So, I interpreted and I wrote down what you said there, zero buses through town center might resolve the issue, that won't resolve the issue. There's the area north of East Link train station that's a mess now, and from the scenarios that I've seen, you've got five times, potentially five times as many buses going through there. So, kind of watch out for that. Mr. Albertman brought up a good point. It's my recollection that the reason way back that Mercer Island got SOV access on the HOV on the center lanes is because they calculated we have one full lane of traffic. Does anybody recall that?
I've never seen anything like that.
Yeah, so there's something out there that we, Mercer Islanders, contributed one full lane of traffic. Do you have any feel for when Mercer Island gets, if we get access to the SOV under four, under R-8A, what will happen to that HOV lane?
I'm not sure I completely.
Well, I'm concerned about.
I'm sure you should feel free to send that one to Wash.
Yeah. Yeah, it might be out of your gap. Okay, that's all I have then.
Okay.
Mike, I would say that is one of the questions we have with our transportation expert to help us understand what that might be.
I certainly, I certainly recall that the original basis for us getting Sound Transit was that we contributed one full lane of traffic, the center line, one full lane of traffic. So, that concerns me because I'm sure we contribute now probably more than one full lane.
Back to Benson.
Yes. You know, I looked at the matrix and the comments. I just curious whether or not Sound Transit, have you identified any issue or concern raised by the residents that you guys did not know about? I mean, is this, most of these seem to be things that have been raised over and over again. So, is there anything new that you've learned?
To my mind, nothing new or shocking in that list. You know, it's sort of general theme, you know, of what we have been hearing. I think this really gave a good opportunity for folks, you know, to come out and speak their mind, get those comments recorded in multiple different formats and forms, but...
And that leads me to my next question. That is, I think it was great that you compiled all these comments, okay? I've heard, the question is, what are you going to actually, how are you going to use them, and how are they going to be incorporated in the decision-making process? I heard the city manager mention that they're going to be used to help identify the issues that are going to be negotiated or discussed. But I guess my concern would be that these comments somehow, I don't want them to get lost. And I want, you know, I would like to see in the process that it respects the comments and that it somehow, in this process, that it shows that the comments have been, what the response is to these comments. And whether or not we end up getting the response that we like, I think it's important just to make sure that you just don't compile and do nothing with it, but you actually respond to the public and say, we heard, we know that this was an issue, and this is how we're responding. And you may not agree, but this is how we're responding. But I don't know if I'm making my, it's more of a comment than anything else.
Yeah, and I think we're absolutely in agreement with you. You don't ask somebody's opinion if you don't intend to do anything with it. And so, to the extent that people don't like the answer, or it's a matter of pointing people to information that's already been developed, you know, the question already has an answer to it, we intend to do that, but there are some meaty things there that may require some additional analysis or study. But the intent here is to be transparent and be accountable to the public so they see where those comments went and what happened with them.
Mike.
I'm concerned about the scheduling, and I understand your processes, that you update your schedule once a quarter. Will there be a kind of a top-down review of your schedule? My request is that you do that in June of 2016, so our citizens have a real good confidence in that 2023 opening. And there's no hiding that I'm skeptical of that 2023, given that you just had to pass that twenty-million-dollar change order on the original, the design across, across the bridge. That implies there's some scheduling, design-slash-scheduling issues. So, again, my question is, will there be a top-down review of the schedule in June, June 2016, so the voters going into Sound Transit III have a real good level of confidence of the 2023?
Yeah, and actually, to that, we have set a baseline date for this project of what it's to open. We are monitoring that on a daily and weekly basis. Every Monday at four o'clock, I'm in a meeting with Ron Lewis to discuss that very issue about where our risks are and what we're doing to mitigate that schedule. But we are, right now, marching hard towards that 2023 opening date. If there is any slip in that, that will be acknowledged publicly and, you know, any adjustment to that. But right now, confidence level is in the ninety percentile right now for delivery by 2023.
Yep.
Just following up on Mike's comment, I just want to reemphasize what we said to Ron last time he was here and what is part of our guiding principles. From the standpoint of Mercer Island, based on the 2004 amendment, Center roadway cannot close until the lost mobility has been mitigated, or at least has been agreed, the mitigation plan has been agreed to and implemented to the extent appropriate. So, that's going to impact schedules down the road. I mean, that's the position of this council, and it's the position of all the signatories to the 2004 amendment. So, as our city manager said, so far, WashDOT's missing in action, and it is definitely going to be in Sound Transit's interest, as much as it's in the city's interest, to get them to engage, and we hope that we can somehow make that happen.
Absolutely. Other questions? Debbie.
I need to be actually able to see the resolution that will be in front of Sound Transit next Thursday, or a resolution, or letter, a statement, or a packet material?
There will only be a presentation. It'll be a verbal presentation nearly identical to what you're hearing here today. And so, anything that we take to them, that would be in the November timeframe, and so there will be advance opportunity for the council to view that. In all likelihood, it'll come to the council before it goes to the board, so.
I hope so.
Yes.
Other questions? Okay. Noel, to, are we going to you for your comments on this?
Yeah, let me just.
Okay. Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Just to sort of wrap it up, I think we, I think we covered the next, the next steps generally in the discussion there. So, we hope to be back in November. Hopefully, we will be reporting that WashDOT has engaged, and we will be coming to you with a list of, here's the identified issues, action steps, and some timelines for resolving them. So, that's, that's the goal for November, but we will keep you updated. The only other thing to mention, it's in your packet, and that's the guiding principles document, which sets the framework for how, how we're thinking and approaching the negotiations. We will be getting that up on our webpage and getting that out so our citizens can see it right away. And then the other thing, as Eric mentioned, once they get their completed public comment links and transcript links put together, we will be sure to link those from our webpage as well.
Benson. Is there any plans to have, no, I mean, I guess really as addressed to Noel or to the staff, to have somebody attend the Sound Transit Board meeting, you know, make themselves available?
Yeah, to answer questions.
Yes. And also to.
Yes.
Give you the proceedings.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, with that, thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll move to Agenda Bill 5119, 2014 Mercer Island Dashboard Report. Chip Quarter.
Good evening. For the record, your finance director, Chip Quarter. Sorry for the lateness in getting this report to you. This is usually, we do it in about June timeframe and through scheduling challenges and whatnot, got pushed to October. So, this is for 2014, and as you remember, this particular model encompasses about thirty-five performance indicators, and within that, there's a bunch of sub-indicators, trying to give you additional context and to paint what I hope is a clearer picture of performance. Also, these thirty-five indicators are organized around the city's six priorities of government. You'll see what I call a report card summary on pages three through ten in your agenda bill. That's in Exhibit One. I've added some different rating categories, so I have very good and good, improving, concerning, needs attention, and unknown. There's a couple of instances in which we weren't able to gather the data, so hence unknown. What I've tried to do is kind of cull together not quite half of the indicators that I thought seemed really interesting if I put myself in your shoes, and it touches on things where we look really good and things which would be concerning or needs attention, trying to be fair across the board. The first thing I want to touch on is number two measure, crime prevention effectiveness. This looks at our violent and our property crime rates relative to other east side cities and King County average. One of the challenges is that it has two different crime reporting systems. All the cities and the county aren't on the same system just yet. For years, we were on UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting System, and currently, our city and a number of others have moved to NIBR's, National Incident-Based Reporting System. And just so you know, one of the differences under NIBR's is you could have a criminal incident where there's multiple crimes. NIBR's counts those multiple crimes. UCR doesn't. There's a hierarchy rule in place, and so it takes the most serious, they say there's three crimes committed by this single individual, takes the most serious and counts only that. So, you'll see, for example, Sammamish has the best, the lowest number in terms of violent and property crime rates, but they use the UCR method. They haven't gone to the NIBR, moved over to NIBR's yet, and of course, King County's, who provides their services, and King County's still in UCR. But what you'll see is, whether it's violent crimes or property crimes, Mercer Island is very good relative to this sampling of cities on the east side and King County average. What will stand out to you, hopefully, I think it's fairly common sense, is what distinguishes Redmond, Issaquah, Cookland, and Bellevue from Mercer Island and Sammamish. Well, significant retail commercial sector, their employers, lots of folks coming to work there. You have very few arterials on Mercer Island and Sammamish, where you have lots of arterials in those other cities. Demographics of the residents here on the island and Sammamish, very highly educated, high median income. And then what distinguishes Mercer Island from Sammamish, of course, is the presence of I-90, which invites a higher crime rate, if you will. I thought, happy to take questions as we go along. Any questions on this particular one? Debbie?
So, my understanding is that the data switched to NIBR's, the city of Mercer Island, beginning in 2013. So, the chart that's up there, is that a consistent use of NIBR's from 2010, or is suddenly then showing different numbers as, different methodology as of 2013?
I can answer that.
Good.
For the record, at home, your police chief. Yes, so, good question there. In 2010, 11, and 12, you're seeing UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting Data, and then NIBR started in 2013. I initially thought it was 14, but it's 2013, so you'll see an increase there. And yes, I think we've had an increase in some property crimes, shoplifting, for example. I know that Albertson's, a detective sergeant said that Albertson's was a favorite target, but that's closed now, so hopefully that resolves that shoplifting issue we had there. The other thing.
So, Ed, if we were to close QFC, I think some stores may be a little, I don't know, better at discouraging shoplifting. Albertson's, apparently there was an issue there, but that seems to have self-resolved itself.
One of the things I do, I'll just make mention, I do look at other cities. If we realize an increase in any sort of crime, I do look at our neighboring agencies, and I ask the other chiefs, are you also experiencing a similar increase? And all of the other chiefs I've talked to have said yes, with property crimes, they have increased, realized an increase. And in fact, Washington State recently was listed as number one in the nation for property crimes. So, this is not something specifically unique to Mercer Island, and with that, I don't suggest that we then dismiss the importance of it. It is very important. It is also why we try to engage our citizens in helping us with the recent lock it or lose it campaign that Nancy, we helped us with, with the pause on patrol. I've mentioned in the past specifically, our Public Safety Committee has encouraged us to do creative ways, finding creative ways to address some of the issues by engaging our citizens. So, we do try hard to engage the citizens. I've had a citizen tell me not that long ago, he says, Ed, I don't have a key to my front door. And I said, why not? He says, well, because I never lock it. And those are the things that are a bit frustrating. Almost half of the burglaries on the island are as a result of unlocked entries. So, there are little things citizens can do, like I say, pause and patrol, the lock it or lose it campaign, we now have these door hangers that we'll be distributing as reminders. And then also, I'll just remind people, we also, despite the increases we see, some are due to actual increase, some due to the NIBR's issue we have here. But Mercer Island is still a very safe place to live. If we look at our most recent survey, eighty-seven percent of the people say that they feel safe on the island walking around. So, there is a balance there, and, you know, there's, there are things you can do as a citizen to keep yourself safe and also realize it's still a very safe island, but don't become complacent. So, that's my message on that.
Move us along. Albert.
Traffic safety effectiveness. This looks at our traffic accident rate as measured by number of traffic accidents, excluding, if there's any accidents on a state route or, you know, highway, those are excluded per thousand population. Again, Mercer Island is very good, consistently used as number two amongst this group of cities. Again, what, why? We have very few arterials, just like Sammamish, very few high-volume intersections. Those are two, direct relationship between those two things and accident rates. And then, of course, presence of I-90 is what distinguishes Mercer Island from Sammamish. The others have, in addition, I-90, 405, and 520, of course. Questions on that? Fire loss prevention effectiveness. This one, we had a hard year last year. This happens about once every five to six years. We had three million dollars' worth of fire loss in 14, and the last time we had almost that level was back in 2008, 2.74 million a single waterfront home loss back then. And so, this happens from time to time, and as you'll see shortly, it's not a reflection of our suppression responsiveness, it's simply luck of the draw, unfortunate. And so, this happens from time to time. And as you'll see shortly, it's not a reflection of our suppression responsiveness, it's simply luck of the draw, unfortunately. I should mention that one of the things that sets Mercer Island apart is assessed valuation. It's the highest per square mile of anywhere in King County. And I'm excluding the tiny cities like Medina and the Point Cities, but it's the highest. As a result of the high assessed valuation, your losses tend to be greater as a result. When you look at this in a more average way, and so, I take the five years and average them across, and this smooths that out a little bit, still Mercer Island because of that high fire losses in '14 still is at $34,000 per thousand population, just a hair underneath Redmond. Unfortunately, we've been unable to get Bothell and East Side Fire Rescue to participate the last few years, so we have fewer data points.
Mike?
Chip, if you go back to the prior slide, and I'll make this observation. I'm critical of the dashboard report. That's not a surprise. And this kind of shows an example of the so what of it. You know, if I see something that jumps from an average of, I don't know, 20,000 to 133,000, and that doesn't tell me to do, when I say me, the council, that doesn't tell the council that we have to do something, then I ask the question, why do we measure this? And why is that important? Because if there's going to be such a dramatic change in that and we don't do anything, then that means that we could be measuring something that will enlist our effort and attention and change to improve some other part of the island's process, or the city's processes.
So, I actually was going to go in the same direction, but maybe with a little bit more open-ended question. Clearly, you've got a lot of data here, so this is something that is collected and monitored across multiple cities. But what we're hearing is that at the end of the day, can't, it doesn't influence behavior or action on our part. So, it does beg the question of whether there's-
Why?
Whether there's another measure that might be a more useful measure in that it's something that we can ultimately influence the outcomes for.
This is an example of why I use multiple measures. You'll see the fire response and EMS response. Let's get fire response measures and number of fires in conjunction with this to help provide some additional perspective. And so, all this is a bottom-line fire loss measure, an outcome measure, if you will. Let's say we were consistently higher than the average. To me, that would raise a red flag and get me to start asking questions, such as, is it because we just don't have, we have lots of older homes with no sprinkler systems? Okay, there's a direct correlation between that and fire loss, as an example. It'd get me asking those kind of questions. Here, because we're consistently better, except for once every five to six years or so, and when you see in conjunction with the fire response, where you see we have improved significantly over the past five years, that gives me some level of comfort that I don't need to be concerned about what's going on there.
But I think you both make a good point. And we used to call this measure fire suppression, and then you said, well, wait a minute, this isn't about how good we are at suppressing fires, because this is about have fires started. We're actually really good at putting them out once they start, but this is about them starting. And so, I think, you know, as we go forward with dashboard reports in the future, I think that's the kind of thing we'll, these things are always open for rethinking and retooling, and you guys made some good points about, you know, making sure our measures are useful.
Yep.
So, what are we seeing so far in 2015? We should have 10 months of data already for fire loss. What's the total? Do we know?
I haven't asked Steve yet.
Can we get that and give that to the council? Because I think Mike and Bruce both make great points. If you don't do something with this information, then we're wasting everyone's time.
Benson?
Are we collecting data as far as the causes of these fires? I mean, I guess that would be more important than, I mean, the fact is, this is after the fact. And, but, do we collect that data?
Yes.
Okay. So, we could actually see, so there is a trend. I mean, I think somebody pointed out, a good point, that the homes that are, I mean, fires are basically in older homes that might be due to some other, whether it's logical problems or whatever, so.
Yeah, we do have that-
You're setting yourself up for it.
Yes. And next year's dashboard will be number of council member homes that have caught fire. Then we're smoking in bed, Benson.
Jane?
Well, I'm just jumping ahead to the next page, looking at response times. It's quite amazing to shave off a whole minute in a couple of years in average response time for fire suppression.
And I'll touch on that in just a second.
Oh, well, I'm impressed. I think our fire laws would be worse if this were not a good number.
Okay. Before we get to fire loss, emergency medical aid effectiveness. And so, this is, and again, on Mercer Island, we're small. The number of incidents is like four to eight on average per year, so it's a small sample. But this is the cardiac arrest survival rate relative to the King County average. Again, King County has the highest survival rate, 62% in the entire nation. Other major cities and counties, it's like under 15%. And so, it's dramatically different. And Mercer Island is at 56% in 2014, which again is exceptional. It's very, very good. Timely fire and EMS response. So, I break it into this up into two pieces of the fire department on fire suppression calls. It varies from year to year. The average number of calls, of fire suppression calls per year is about 63, but averages 1.2 per week. The average response time, look at 2010 compared to 2014, it's gone down from six and a half minutes to five and a half minutes in '14, so pretty significant. Responses within six minutes, the percentages increased from 51% in 2010 to 58% in '14. Again, I would judge that to be significant. Emergency medical- Yes, ma'am?
Actually, a positive question for Chief Holmes. A couple of years ago, when we were talking about just sort of the distribution of emergency services on Mercer Island, one of the questions or one of the thoughts was that as the demographic in our town center changes, that we may in fact be seeing more emergency services being requested in the town center based on, again, demographics, perhaps an older population, et cetera. Is that something that would play into this as well? In terms of, you know, distance from the fire station, if one presumes that it's because there is a greater number of calls coming from the town center where there is a fire station within a few blocks? So, it comes to the point of how valuable the questions are, but I would be interested in understanding if and when some of the services that we're provided, that we're providing are being impacted by any changes in the demographics that we're experiencing.
Well, that's actually a great question, and I hesitate to answer or to weigh in too heavily behalf of the fire chief. But I can say at least anecdotally, I know that a lot of fire aid calls are in the CBD or some of the homes where elderly residents reside, so I can at least say that. On the police side, we've had more bicycle thefts from some of these multifamily dwellings, some of the apartments. So, we've seen a little uptick in that on the police side. But I think your question, if I understood it right, may have been more directly toward aid calls and aid service. And then, to that, I can only speak perhaps anecdotally, but I think that's what I've heard the fire chief mention before is what I've mentioned.
You know, I think the point is, is, you know, when we look at this, what would we extrapolate in terms of what type of services we're providing, where, with what distribution of resources? So, I don't presume to have an answer or recommendation based on this, but I think it would be interesting if we're looking at actually improving level of service.
And then, moving down the line to emergency medical aid calls, number of calls, it's averaged just about 1,500 a year. So, that's about 29 calls per week. Give you some perspective, the average response time has improved by half a minute, from five and a half minutes in 2010 to five minutes in 2014. Responses within six minutes has also improved from 68% in 2010 to 74% in 2014. Moving on to risk management.
Are you keeping metrics on how many times our firefighters are taking people off-island to the hospitals for the-
Steve has those. I don't have them in the dashboard report, but Steve has those, that information.
It would be good, nothing for future years, to include that in the dashboard report because it is something we should be following.
It's been four years since that?
Yeah.
James?
Say that one more time.
The change in the structure of providing emergency services offline or ambulance service, that was a budget change that took place four years ago.
I remember, but you wanted to track specifically residents versus not residents.
What percentage of, I'm not sure what the right metric is, but something that we can understand how many, how much of firefighters are actually taking people to hospitals and-
I guess it begs the question, though, what, I'm not sure whether we're trying to move that up or down, or-
I don't know, but I just want to, I want to see what we're doing.
Yeah, we can find out how often we do the transport and how often we call an AMR.
Maybe we begin with the data-
Yeah, let's start there.
Before we talk about putting it into the dashboard.
Okay. Got it. Next, risk management. This is where I track our insurance claims with WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Authority. The numbers in your report and on the screen here are a rolling five-year total. Compares Mercer Island to the little insurance group called Group Four that we're in, we're one of 19 cities. You'll see we're consistently below the Group Four cities average. You would expect that because the primary driver of claims is the number of workers or what's measured in worker hours. So, the larger cities have more workers, therefore, more worker hours, therefore, a greater incidence of claims, if you will. We're at the lower end of worker hours amongst this group of 19 cities, and so, we are consistently below the average. I would note, when you compare 2010 to 2014, our total numbers declined seven and a half percent. I also would note that, well, I'll save that for the very next slide. This is just kind of the big picture, if you will. When you kind of drill down and kind of wonder, okay, what are we doing really good in terms of types of claims versus where's a struggle? This is where I pull this together and look at the top six claims areas. This comprises 87% of our total annual claims. And so, the first three, street, maintenance, police, and sewer utility, we are significantly below the Group Four average. We've been really, really well there. All cities have the challenge areas. Ours is the water utility. It's been that way for a long time, as long as I've been here, actually. And so, significantly above average. And we'll touch on why that is in a few slides down the road. Question?
On a slide prior-
Yeah.
You did decrease to seven and a half percent over that period. To what do you attribute that? Is there some great practice that you've implemented that you need to replicate, or?
I can't put my finger on it.
It looks to me like you've got data that kind of bounces around and-
You do.
You've been low and you're a bit higher now.
Yeah. You really do.
Probably.
Okay. Moving on, we now have a series, real quickly, of financial-related measures. This is our bond rating, a measure of credit worthiness. We have two different bond ratings. Our UTGO, Unlimited Tax Obligation Bond, that's for voted debt. That's the second highest possible rating, AA1 by Moody's. The highest rating is AAA. Bellevue and Seattle both have that rating. I've been informed by Moody's. Last time we went and did debt back in '13. We have an unofficial AAA rating on our voted debt, but we don't have any voted debt to give a AAA rating to, okay? So, if anyone, that day ever happens, we will have a AAA bond rating. In terms of our non-voted debt, our limited tax general obligation bonds, we have the highest possible rating, AA1, which is the same as Seattle and Bellevue as well.
Benson?
My only comment when I saw this, obviously, great news, was that it sort of undercuts the argument for having that revenue stabilization fund, because, as I recall during the discussion, it was because our concern was to make sure that we look good as far as the rating agencies. So, we're near the top already. So, I just want to make that comment. I just, I know that's going to be something that-
I think you'd say that helps keep us at the top.
Yes, it would.
Well, okay. I guess it depends how you look at it, but maybe we don't need it, I mean, as far as stabilization fund. But that's, we can talk about later.
Next one. This looks at our financial management practices as measured by our annual financial audit. For the past over 20 years now, we've had a clean audit opinion that means no findings. That doesn't mean we're perfect. There's always room for improvement, but that is a good indicator. Financial condition. This is one that I made up many, many years ago, and it's where I compare our tax revenues and our general fund, which used to be about 73% of total general fund revenues way back when, eight to 10 years ago, to our personnel costs, which back at the same time, used to be about 67%, two-thirds of total costs. And so, I'd create a ratio between those two. And from my perspective, I always want to make sure that the ratio, I want to make sure the tax revenues grew as fast as personnel costs. So, what you'll see is, fast forward 2014, our tax revenues as a percentage of total revenues have come down. Again, it used to be about 73%, 74%, down to 70% and change, okay? And then, personnel costs have gone up from 67% up to 72% of total costs. So, why, when you look at the 2014 ratio, it's below one. And my recommendation is you want the ratio to be at least one, if not higher. And so, why is it below 14, or below one in 2014? Well, there's two reasons. One, in part, is look at the tax revenue growth. You've heard me talk to you about this before. In '14, tax revenues grew 3.8% in the general fund versus personnel costs, which grew by 5%. Now, to fair disclosure here, that included additional staff, in particular, contract staff and DSG in 2014 to the tune of $330,000. That, of course, is funded not by taxes, but by development fees. And so, to make this a fair analysis, I really got to pull out the $330,000 of costs, which are personnel costs funded by fees and not by taxes. And when I do that, the ratio bumps up to one for '14.
One what?
To one.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving us on, real quickly, the one environmental stewardship measure I threw in here was total gallons of gasoline and diesel used by the city. As you'll recall, the council asked for this change a few years back. And so, in comparing '14 to '13, our consumption is down almost 5%. Yes?
So, yeah, that's a meaningful metric. Does it include police, fire, and marine?
Yes. The entire fleet.
Well, excellent, then, Chip.
And just to provide some additional perspective of a fleet, which includes the heavy equipment, police cars, everything, 131 vehicles and equipment, we're roughly at a pace of just below 10% turnover rate. So, we've, over this five-year period, we've averaged 12 vehicles per year that we replace. Okay?
So, I noted in this that you attributed this to rising efficiency of vehicles, mostly, but at a slow rate of turnover, something that would not change terribly quickly.
It's not going to be a huge, huge impact.
So, my only question, though, is, it seems to me there could be wild cards out there. And one would be a snowy winter, having us have trucks on the road, crazy amounts of time doing prep for ice and then plowing afterwards. I guess I'd just be curious to know to what extent those kinds of things that are outside our control end up being the tail wagging the dog here, or whether there are other things than just vehicle efficiency that we have some potential control over and could make strides in this.
Yes, that happens, and you could argue, almost all these indicators have something. They're not perfect. They're not truly holy, if you will.
I guess I'm just wondering, it'd be interesting to do at least a first-level analysis of what the big contributors are, you know, within that number, and understand whether, doing, it's the Pareto analysis, right? You pick out your big contributors and you say, what can I do within those big contributors? Don't worry too much about the Prius you're driving, because no matter what you do with that, you're not going to have an impact on the results.
Yeah. Okay. I agree.
Benson?
You know, I'm just, I have a question, general question regarding the ratings that are attributed to some of these dashboard. So, I assume that a lot of them are based on what the citizens provide in a survey. That's an assumption. Some of the questions, some of the dashboard-
There's a mixture of stuff in the dashboard, some of which includes your last citizen survey back in April 2014.
Right. Okay. So, the ones that are not from the surveys, you know, for instance-
Like this.
Like this one, for instance. So, it's rated as good. And so, the question is, what's the basis for that?
My judgment call.
Okay. So, the ones that don't involve input from the citizens as part of the survey, whether it's good, needs improvement, very good, is that something that you're making a call then, Chip? Or is that-
Yes.
Is there a standard that we're using?
It's based on, yeah, it really is. But it's also based on my experience with you over 10 years and trying to glean, it is a judgment call, is the bottom line.
Okay.
With some of it being a look, as you've already seen, with some of that being a comparison to other cities as well, and how do we stand?[1799.21] With some of it being a look, as you've already seen, with some of that being a comparison to other cities as well, and how do we stand?
Okay, okay. We'll have a great opportunity to talk about that very issue in just a moment, on one particular one. Street pavement condition. This is put together by Clint Morris, our street engineer. We break out our streets into arterials and residential. And for this purpose, I group them together, looking at arterials. In terms of the good and satisfactory rating, in fourteen, that's almost seventy-nine percent. That's very, very good. In terms of our fair and poor ratings, that's twenty-one percent of our arterials, measured in miles. Residential street, yes?
I have made this comment privately to you already, and I think Bruce and Noel were in the room, and I'll just repeat it for the benefit of the council. Living up on First Hill, we see a lot of construction, and the street gets ripped up on a very frequent basis and a lot of patching going on. And at least my personal observations, based upon a lot of dog walking, is that the quality of patching varies greatly and that you see patches, what I would call fail, on an all-too-offen basis. And I define fail as you can see the crack around the patch versus, I've seen other patches where it's nice and covered over, so you've got a smooth patch, and there's no place for water to get in into the road. So I really, I mean, I would encourage Jason to take a look at that, whether it's his department or maybe it's Development Services, however we're doing this. But, you know, all you have to do is just go up on Seventy-second, you know, Seventy-third, Seventy, or Seventy-second, Seventy-fourth, and just walk up there. Just walk a few blocks, and you'll see the difference in patching that's going on. And ultimately, that just destroys the value of the repaving we do on these streets. Because once the water presumably gets in there, then it's ultimately going to ruin, it's going to ruin the streets. And it's something that I will raise, just mention now, but I'll raise more at the January planning session. I really believe that we need to get control over that. And if it means that we have a designated contractor who does every patch job on our streets, and then we bill back that to the developer or whoever, the homeowner, whoever is needing to cut a hole in the street, so be it. I'm not saying we use city staff to do it, but I think if we have a specific contractor or a couple of contractors, a quality of whose work we believe in and are willing to stand by, and we say, these are the only people we're going to allow you to use in patching up city streets, I think we may need to go that direction. So I would encourage Jason, Noel, whoever is involved, to take a look at that. Because particularly with all the construction going on, and First Hill is the best example of that, you're going to see a lot of differences in the quality of patching that's going on out there.
I think we'll put that on a list of things to take a look at.
Okay. Looking at residential streets, in terms of those in the good and satisfactory categories, almost fifty-four percent fair and poor, about thirty-one percent in very poor and failed, six percent. Water infrastructure condition. This is the one that I highlighted when we talked about risk management. So compared to these various jurisdictions, our neighbors, we're at the bottom typically. And when even when you take an average across that five-year period, we have an average of point seven-seven. This is water main breaks per thousand service connections is the metric. And we're at point seven-seven breaks per thousand connections versus point three-three, so more than double. That kind of begs the question, well, why would that be? What I've told the council in the past, I always try to put this in front of the utility board and the council, is about forty percent of our water mains are over fifty years old, so that's a concern. Not that you can't have mains that old, you can, but when it's that big of a number, it puts some pressure on me to, how do I finance that, right? Topography of the island and weather-related soil movement. We made some decisions. The sewer, the sewer, sewer, lake land project was so expensive, over twenty million dollars, and we were, you know, increasing sewer rates significantly. We tried to hold down. We had significant rate increases in the waterside, but we held them down during the sewer, lake, land project, or leading up to it and during the project. And then our own water main replacement policy through '08 was really driven by street resurfacing, and it changed beginning in 2009.
So I have an observation on this, which might not make it as bleak as depicted on this slide or the prior slide is. And we should take advantage of this observation. By the consultant that we had during the ECOI, they identified the industry standard metric and found out we were right in the ballpark of the industry standard. When I say the ballpark, we were dead in the middle of what the industry standard is. So I'd ask that you take a look at that, and as with all these metrics, I'm very critical when we compare to others, other surrounding communities. But this is, this is low fruit hanging to compare by industry standard.
Yeah, I don't, we'll double-check, but I don't remember us being in the middle of the ballpark. But we'll double-check that. One thing I do want to bring up is, I think for December meeting, is that what we're targeting? We're going to be coming back with you, to you, with a report on what have we been doing in response to the ECOI outbreak and all the work that was recommended that you haven't heard about for a while. So we'll be reporting on that in December. We can revisit that metric and talk about, you know, what are some other things we need to do to adjust as we go forward.
Well, that's another issue, since you brought it up and we're kind of on that water stuff, I'd like to bring up. I should hope one of the recommendations is tracking that red line. She talked about that red line on being below one milligram per liter of chlorine. That should be something that we have in this report and seeing, and when I say it, I'm saying how often, how many times in the last month or the last year did we go beneath that red line, out of control? You know, and it seemed like the question that I was asking her was that you at your shop were going to start using control charts. How many times were you out of control? And that should be on here, because that shut us down for a week. And if something, if there's anything that can shut us down for a week, boom, it should be on there.
Just one other thing. I've mentioned this before to the council. From terms of perspective, what distinguishes Mercer Island from Bellevue, Issaquah, San Amish, Redmond? Think about population growth, specifically new building, new housing units, okay, over the last twenty-five years. Much greater growth there than on here on Mercer Island by comparison. And along with that, the infrastructure, the water infrastructure and sewer, for that matter, that goes with it. So when you look at percentages of their infrastructure, a much greater percentage of those cities is newer compared to Mercer Island. And that's, you know, we've just, we've been around a while, have old infrastructure. Next, sewer infrastructure. This is good news. The last two years, we've been, again, system backups, sewer system backups for a thousand service connections is the metric relative to these cities that we could get to respond in four. Unfortunately, I've struggled to get their data for last year. But point one-four is very good. And the trend, when you look at the, over the past five years, we've averaged point two-seven breaks per thousand service connections versus the jurisdiction average of point one-five. That's gotten better and better each year. So it's been improving. So good news there. Skip that, move to, here's the one survey question I've included in here, and just because I find it interesting. And town center, again, this is from the survey that was conducted in April 2014. And as a reminder, when I usually do these surveys, it's usually in January, February. This is one of the years where it happened a little bit later. But I take that result and I post it as a 2013 result, so that can create some confusion there. But the survey was conducted in April 2014, that's a year and a half ago. And what I just find interesting, and just so you know, the prior to 2011, so back in 2009, that the same question, in terms of number of residents somewhat satisfied or very satisfied, that was seventy-seven percent. And I just, given all that's gone on this year, I try to put myself in your shoes and try to think, okay, let's try to gauge all that I'm hearing from residents and tie it to a survey that was conducted a year and a half ago. You guys draw your own conclusions. But there's a decrease from the, in 2011 to 2013, and from seventy-six percent to seventy-one percent. When we asked people, name one thing, one improvement you can make, if any, to the town center to make it better, twenty-two percent focused on parking, expanding the parking, eleven percent said stop building, cease the overdevelopment, nine percent went the other way, add more businesses, stores, eight percent add more restaurants, and seven percent increase pedestrian safety. So I just bring this up just to provide some perspective, given all that's gone on this year and you're choosing the town center. I just found it interesting. Draw your own conclusions.
So with increased parking being the top one, would you recommend that the council be more diligent in enforcing parking, how do I say this? Parking exemptions or accommodations in our buildings? Is that what you're saying?
That's, I'm going to let you guys make the call on this one. I'm not going to stick my neck out on this one. It's a survey. I mean.
Yeah, but before you go, I am going to make just one teeny political note here. Two thousand fourteen, beginning of 2014, was when we began our process of revisiting codes. And so that was based on, it was January of 2014, planning session, we said, let's begin this process of revisiting codes. And that set in motion a small committee that led to the big committee. So that was based in part on the kinds of data you see there, which was, you know, it's a decline, but it's not a huge decline in, at that time, in what we were seeing in terms of citizen satisfaction with the town center. Jane?
Just a comment on parking, our favorite topic. I, after living here for nearly forty years, I got my first parking ticket in the town center. So watch out there. There is parking enforcement in the town center. Enough said.
Yeah, I don't hear a joke.
Okay, almost.
Please pay on time.
Almost done. Economic vitality. This is a measure of sales tax per capita. And I've noticed after the agenda has gone out, I have mistakenly, you'll see the numbers in the red under 2012, thirteen, and fourteen, under all other sectors. I mistakenly included significant one-time sales tax receipts. I always, I tried to exclude those. So this presentation excludes the numbers, and it's not that big of a difference. But the total sales tax per capita was up six point seven percent in fourteen compared to thirteen. What was the drivers, what were the drivers? Construction up almost five percent, retail wholesale trade up almost seven, and all other sectors up nine point four percent. Last indicator that I'm going to share tonight relates to the thrift shop in terms of its annual activity. I've brought this to the council's attention before. Just keep an eye on volunteer hours. They've gone down, you know, significantly. Just tracked from 2011 on down to fourteen. And the drop from fourteen, from thirteen to fourteen was nine point four percent. Gross sales revenue, as you know, has been flat, and net income also has been fiddly flat. Yes, ma'am?
So you noted it was concerning. I'm assuming because of the amount of dollars that are generated by the thrift shop, the expectation is they will continue to rise to support personnel costs associated with YFS services?
But we've, in the report, what I say is, we don't have the space. We need to process all the donations. And so we finally hit that plateau, if you will. The only way we can significantly increase revenues is to expand the space.
There's at least, if I could comment, it's pretty impressive that the sales and the income went up slightly when volunteer.
Absolutely.
Hours went down so significantly. So while it's concerning, there's also, I think, some opportunity to acknowledge that's a pretty impressive result.
Oh, it is extremely impressive. And the old business model, which was so successful, we were so reliant, and still are reliant, just a little less so, on volunteer hours, we've had to replace them where we could with worksday students, which that is very cheap labor. But we've also had to increase, over the ten years I've been here, the number of paid staff there to make it work. But it is still, it's my favorite thing that we do, that I'm probably the most proud of on Mercer Island when I talk to my counterparts.
And incredibly unique. We're very fortunate.
And Chip, looking out into the future in terms of volunteerism, are we hopeful that numbers sort of flatten out and do well? Or do we forecast a continuing decline?
When I've talked to Cindy and Suzanne, they're forecasting a continued decline. It's going to take additional effort on the part of Suzanne and Logan to get more people to commit. And usually what we're getting is, is we lose some of our older volunteers who've been so committed here for years, and losing them for health reasons typically, right? And we end up replacing them on the short term with people who can't put in as many hours and they're here for, instead of years, maybe a year or less. And that's, so there's a lot more turnover, is what I'm trying to say.
If I do understand correctly, there is, there is an issue with the aging of the volunteer staff. And I would call out that my mother, at seventy-nine, is one of the youngest ones there. So, and mind you, she's very efficient, as is my father. But the other interesting thing, too, is I understand that there have been a number of groups that have gone into the thrift store in various other places in the community, and they're volunteering as sort of one-time efforts. And I think that's great. That can help, that can supplement. So I know that there were fourteen people who gave half a day holiday tagging at the thrift store a couple of weeks ago. But I think that the challenge to the community, the challenge to us, the challenge to the thrift store staff is to figure out how you get that steady predictable volunteer group back in there again.
Yeah.
And I know we keep circling back to this conversation over and over again, but I think I'd like to raise the level of urgency, given the dependence we have on this, this income for our critical services.
And with that, that's it.
All right.
Questions?
And I think we've done questions along the way. So are there further?
You know, it's, questions, more of a management observation. Yeah, as Mike and Bruce pointed out, and I think others have pointed out, that the value of, the value of metrics is because it guides management actions. And, you know, we're now sitting here in October of 2015, looking at the metric results from 2014. And apparently, we don't, at least, maybe we do, but I don't think we do. We don't keep, like, quarterly metrics as we go through the year to guide our city manager and staff as to what's coming. So I'm concerned, you know, if I'm sitting here as your board of directors, and I'm asking you what, you know, how you're managing your operation, if I don't have a sense that you're actually getting current data. And I'm not saying each one of these things has to be current, but I think it's important that you, you take the, take information like this and decide, okay, we may have issues like on the fire, the fire losses, or we may have issues on volunteers. And so maybe that means that going forward, at least until we know we're out of the woods, that you're tracking quarterly data or monthly data or whatever Noel and you guys think is appropriate. But I would at least like to believe, as your board of directors, that when you guys see, or you people see, that you have an issue, that it's, it is somehow surfacing, it's rising to the surface on a more frequent basis than once a year, and that you would be able to tell us, yes, we've identified a problem area and we are tracking it on a regular basis. And so we can tell you if you have a question, or we can tell you we're managing it. And, because that just strikes me as good management practices. So that's, as your board of directors, I would like you to think about that and just, and see how you can, there's a lot of information here, but if you don't use it, and if you don't use it currently, you don't update it currently, it loses its value.
Benson?
Well said, Deputy Mayor. I was a little concerned with the, and there could have been other reasons, I realize, but the gap in time between what we're seeing now and the results that were gathered, for instance, in the survey. And I don't know what the policy reasons were for doing a survey every two years. Obviously, cost might be involved, but, you know, I just wonder whether or not it makes more sense to try to do an annual survey so that when we are. Okay, so. No, 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 no. But the point is, is that, you know, you've got to have current data. When this council is being asked to make policy decisions, I mean, it's, you know, for instance, not that this directly applies, but the town center information, I mean, maybe it would have been better. I mean, it would be nice to know. I mean, it would be nice to know exactly, a little bit more current information where the feeling on the public is, regarding their satisfaction or dissatisfaction. I don't think it necessarily would have changed much, but, you know, now we're just looking at data that's eighteen months old, and so, anyway.
Just to clarify, on the survey itself, that data was shared with council once it was received. So the council had that data a long time ago. It's not just now being reported. But I do, I do wanna follow up on Dan's comments. I think he makes some very good comments. And there are certainly metrics in here that you can question, how relative are they to our day-to-day management of the city? And that's something Chip and I are gonna be looking at going into the next year. And what is the right frequency to get us data we need to actually use it, as opposed to just use it as a report card, you know, every end of the year? So we are looking at that, and then Dan did say it well, and we do need to work that.
Yep.
Well, I'm hesitating. I think, yes, you and Chip should be looking at it, but I would challenge each department head to be coming to you first and foremost with the metrics that they think would best reflect their business. Not only their business today, but their business to come. Because obviously, it's one thing to look at your business in hindsight, it's another one to be able to have line of sight to where you have opportunities, where you have challenges, and begin to be more preemptive.
I agree.
Jane?
Just a question, Chip. I'm thinking about the economic vitality of the town center. And aside from retail receipts, do we keep track of business license applications or anything to give an indication of comings and goings of businesses? Not just retail, but offices and that?
Yes, we do. I don't track it. But we do have that level of detail. It's not something that I look at myself. Because our license revenue from year to year is really pretty much the same, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year.
Derek?
I just wanna make a comment on one of the metrics, which was emergency preparedness, as self-described by residents. So I was concerned about that, particularly in light of getting the debrief with the school district on the results of the emergency drill. I think asking people their own sense of how well-prepared they are is probably not a very reliable indicator of how prepared they actually are. And so I would just challenge us as a city and a community, since we are isolated in a disaster likely, that we should maybe look at a different metric, or find a different way to really more accurately assess whether individuals in the community actually are prepared.
Anyone else?
Just to finish up on the metrics, Chip, or Noel, could we just ask you, just, you do a follow-up to this in the January planning session, just update us on-
Yeah, that's a great idea. That's a great topic for that session.
Okay. So we're at eight fifty-one, we have one agenda bill left. Council members, can you hold on through that? Jane says no. Okay. Till nine.
She's gone.
All right, five minutes. Eight fifty-six.[794.13]
Very simply put, I'll just walk you through, I mean, I can either just take quite, should I just walk you through this proposal? Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. There's kind of two components to it. One is, you may remember back in June at the mini-plan session, I was kind of pushing for a high-level review. This proposal has two things. The high-level review, the assessment of the city's leanness and total operating cost relative to other full-service cities. We wouldn't compare ourselves to contract service cities, the full-service cities. And it also would include what I would deem to be a selective performance audit of the maintenance department, which we talked about at June and also back in January at your planning session.
Okay. What did you agree, we're going to wait till the whole thing or ask questions as?
I think the whole thing's pretty short.
It's pretty short, and I'll describe each piece here.
Might as well let him give the whole thing and then we'll do the questions.
So, on the first piece, the high-level assessment, and what I would recommend is, because I usually do this myself, but there's value, I recognize the value in having someone independent from me do this work. Where you look at 2015 approved FTEs per thousand population, you gain, I usually track it by department or by total for the city. You can also track it by department, which would be useful. You can look at what I call operating budget expenditures. That's your total operating budget, it excludes CIP, because for lots of cities it goes up and down and you exclude debt service. But includes your general fund, your utilities, and those kinds of things. And then if, in selecting the consultant, if the consultant had some other high-level metrics they would recommend, we could incorporate those as well, total and by department. That's the high-level assessment.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize number three there, that's one I, that's important to me. I want to hear from our expert, you know, what other high-level ways can we use to test the leanness or the not-leanness of the city in a meaningful way? So, part of the reason, we don't want to scope fully what that person's going to do. We want them to tell us, here's what we think makes sense for you to look at.
And, yeah, we'll talk more about that shortly, that scoping process. Again, full-service cities, what I would recommend, and there's no need to decide today, but we have our tier-one market comparison cities, that's Auburn, Bothell, Edmonds, Issaquah, Kirkland, Linwood, and Redmond. I would recommend adding Bellevue and Renton as our east-side neighbors as well to the group, but that could be worked out, okay, in the future. That's just who I've typically compared ourselves in the past. Estimated cost, depending on a few things, is about $15,000. Actually, there's some complexity in the analysis, because we track, in our budget document, for example, contracted FTEs. Most cities don't. And so, to get a really good apples-to-apples comparison, there's some engagement with the cities to kind of gather that data if you find this kind of data, this kind of, this component of the audit useful, that is. That's the first piece, the high-level piece. Now, I'm going to move, unless there's questions on this piece, I'm going to move to the more detailed selective performance audit.
You want to take questions now?
Yeah, if there's more on this high-level assessment.
Questions on this part of it?
Well, it's kind of, I have con it. Why are you hiring a government consultant, other than the obvious reasons? Why not think outside the box and tap private enterprise and bring in a fresh set of eyes that look at our processes with the same scrutiny that our private businesses have out there? The Boeings of the world, the Packers of the world, the true, you know, professionals of being leaner and meaner out there.
I'll try not to take offense at that. I was going to address that at the very end of the presentation. There are various consultants that aren't local government consultants that's especially appropriate, not for this part, but for the more focused selective performance audit on the maintenance department. Where you could hire, like a C, what are they called? C2H Hill, there you go, as an example, an engineering firm, to do that kind of analysis. They're expensive, they're a national firm, but that is an option.
Well, that's certainly my preference. The other thing is, you know, I just talked on the prior agenda item at questioning why we compare ourselves with other cities. When I see that, it just becomes justification on doing what we're doing. One, and two, when you compare yourselves to other cities, it's very inefficient, because you have to figure out what our measurements are and in some way compare apples-to-apples to the other cities. And it's never going to be a good comparison. And inevitably, what happens is when there's a disconnect, it's not identified as something that we can do better. It's identifying, well, the reason that there's a disconnect between us and a sister city is because they do it differently. It would be much more efic, what we should do is continue to, continue to measure against ourselves prior performance. So, you know, if we, if we make the mark this quarter, we pat everybody on the back, and then we say, get back into the trenches and do better next quarter. And that's, that's the way businesses do. They don't, I mean, PACCAR doesn't compare themselves to Freightliner. PACCAR compares themselves to what they did the last quarter, the quarter before that, and then the next quarter, and the next quarter. It'd be so much more efficient and so much more meaningful, and it would continue to drive efficiency in this organization. Not comparing to other cities, which just becomes a reason to justify additional, additional whatever.
I disagree. The private sector does compare themselves to their competitors.
Yeah, they do it.
That's standard, industry-based practices.
At a really high level, you know.
No, at the, at the level of, I saw a product and somebody else sells a product and the price is going to be there.
How can Kenworth get Freightliner's performance information? They can, I mean, it's proprietary information. How would you get it?
There's all sorts of information there in terms of the quality of...
I can tell you, the company that I work for just came out today with some pretty remarkable assessments of a particular competitor in a particular area, and, you know, it's possible.
Chip, I do want to ask a question on this, and that is, so, if you're looking at, like, fire service performance or police performance, I feel like what we deliver compared to our neighboring cities is pretty much apples-to-apples. And I think it's probably pretty much apples-to-apples across lots of departments. But it does feel to me like there, it's worth making sure that the suite of services that we're delivering is the same as other cities, not just what the cost of delivering service is. So, for instance, if we are delivering, well, thrift stores delivering money that turns into mental health counselors, something uniquely we do. So, if we were to compare our operation to another city's operation, we would want to make accommodation for the fact that we're doing something different than other cities are doing. And I guess where I'm going with this is, I'd like us to at least be cognizant of what our outputs are as well as our inputs in terms of the money that's going into the system.
And that's appropriate, when you do a more detailed review, what I'm proposing is very high-level metrics, okay? And do you get a perfect apples-to-apples? You can get a Fuji to Roma, right? It's hard to get a Fuji to Fuji, but you can get pretty dang close, because I know, as an example, no one else has a YFS department, okay? And so, to make a good apples-to-apples, I exclude that from the comparison, as an example. I know Issaquah doesn't have their own fire department. And that's just two quick examples. Those get factored in to the comparison process. It's meant to be very high-level, to kind of give you a sense of staffing, are we overstaffed? Do we belt right, you know, the right-sized staff? Is our operating budget, is it really huge, you know? And it's, you're right, there are different choices cities make, or Redmond, very high levels of service, very high staffing levels, that's not good nor bad, that's what they choose. They will, I know, they will show up as the highest number of employees per thousand population and the highest operating expenditures. That's been that way as long as I can remember. They make certain choices about service levels that the rest of us go differently, at lower level of service. And so, it's just meant to give you a sense of where we're at. And if you don't find that useful, I'd be surprised, but that's your call, not mine. Okay? I'm just proposing it.
Teri?
So, a question that this brings to mind for me is, is there any data benchmarking in general that you're looking at? So, not necessarily comparison city to city, but just national or regional or state-level benchmarks? And I'll give you a for instance. So, the YFS service is unique to be within a city, but every city in the region has human service funding that supports similar or analogous services within their city. So, there's a benchmark of so many dollars spent on, say, human services per population. I've heard other cities talk about that. So, is there that, rather than getting diving into each comparison city and doing that analysis of what's an apple, what's an orange? Are there benchmarks that are available, and would that be a helpful analysis?
I think it would, and I think that's part of when we hire the auditor. Part of what we'll ask them is, what's the best way to look at this? And I think we'll get some guidance there. But go ahead, Chip.
Okay. So, again, this is meant to be 30,000-foot level, that's all this is, okay? And then, what I suggested back in January, and we discussed again in June at your planning sessions, was picking a department, I'd recommend the maintenance department, they have the highest operating budget in the city. And in my judgment at the time, that's where there's the most opportunity for productivity improvements, okay? And the council agreed, let's look at the department, rather than multiple departments, which is very expensive and very time-intensive. And so, what follows next is a proposal, and just to provide some perspective, and I note this in your agenda bill, when you do a full-blown performance audit of a department our size, or a maintenance department our size, that's at least $100,000, easily up to 150, just depending on how detailed your scope gets. And so, what I'd had to do is do a more focused scope, a more selective audit. And so, for example, I have three things that I recommend in particular. One is, again, looking at staffing level. Broken, and most cities are organized very similarly, they have very similar work teams, and so, it's not that hard to do the comparison. And so, looking at, comparing ourselves to these other comp cities in terms of each of our work teams and staffing level, to give us a sense, are we, you know, where do we fall relative to our peers? I note the work teams, administration, right-of-way/stormwater, water, sewer, and support services. You typically exclude CIP staff, project management staff, from these comparisons, focusing on operations and maintenance. And then, as someone mentioned this earlier, I forgive his, Teri or who now, when you do these comparisons, it's not really to the population, it's not a per-capita assessment, it's relative to infrastructure maintained, like per-thousand service connections, like I showed earlier in the dashboard report, or maybe to customers served. And so, that's a little more detailed staffing comparison than is per-thousand population. That's the first part. The second part is taking into account industry-based best practices and making recommendations. How can you improve productivity on each of your work teams in the city? And focusing on what are each team's, I just made up, three to five kind of top priorities, top responsibilities, and taking a look at those and comparing them to industry-best practices. So, again, kind of more focused. And then finally, because this has been an issue for some on the council, I threw in their fleet, because fleet is, guess what? Under the umbrella of the maintenance department, there's been some concern expressed about do we have the right number of vehicles? Too many? I haven't heard, concerned about too little. And so, let's take a look at that, broken down by depart, user department, and make an assessment, do we have the right number of vehicles or not? And add that to the audit. Those are the three specific things that I've added. Questions on that?
Teri?
I would, I would say in the vehicles, Chip, I'm personally not interested in comparisons with Bellevue or Renton or Auburn or any other city. I think that's one of the areas where the geography of the city really impacts the use of the vehicles. I would personally like to see the performance audit look specifically at our system for replacing vehicles, for identifying how to maintain vehicles, if that's, whatever is reviewable, so we can look at the part of the vehicle equation based solely on what we're doing on Mercer Island. Because I just, I have a hard time comparing us to a lot of other cities, just given our geography. It really does hugely impact our vehicles. So, that would be my two cents on that point.
Other questions?
If you could hold on to questions? I'm going to get to the council's involvement. We saw, for example, that I'm recommending appointing two council members to participate in this audit. So, hang tight on that, because you'll notice that I didn't put together this detailed scope. That was intentional, because I envisioned this audit is, it's really beneficial from your perspective. It's the council that's really, really interested in this audit, and you should be involved in detailing out the scope, as well as selecting the consultant, in my opinion. And just so you know, what kind of what I'm envisioning, I'll just go right to it, is, in essence, instead of doing your typical RFP process, which is very time-consuming, and when you're not entirely sure what the specifics are going to be, you can have a conversation that involves the two council members, myself, Jason, his staff, and you start talking about each work team, and start asking questions, and start beginning to narrow down the scope of what do you want to focus on. And then you invite some consultants in, I was going to recommend two different consultants, and for a conversation, where you have this back and forth. And the consultant can, as you talk about, well, what about this, what about that? And the consultant can kind of give you a sense of trade-offs of, you know, if you want to do this, that's going to be very labor-intensive, you know, is that really that important to you? And kind of give you a sense of cost, and also gives you a chance to kind of interview them and get a sense, do you have confidence in that consultant? I prefer that approach on these kinds of audits better than a typical RFP process, just so you know. And that's kind of what I was envisioning. So, you'd be directly involved in the scoping of the audit, as well as the selection of the consultant. The recommended cost I had up there, again, about $50,000 to $75,000, just depends. It just simply depends on how detailed we get on the scope.
I'm going to add my two cents worth here. Chip, I think that's an excellent idea. Getting the council members involved at the front end of trying to figure out what they actually want to learn makes a lot of sense, rather than you launching into a full-scale analysis and then coming back to us and it having things that are of interest to council, but lots of things that are not what are of interest to council. So, I think the efficiency you'll get out of that. And the fact that council members will get to dive deep into the weeds to understand exactly what's going on will reap some benefits. So, I think that's a good idea. Other council members, comments, questions? Mike?
Well, I'm just concerned, it is so, you're spending so much time on comparing, at the high level and low level, comparing with other cities, and that is a recipe for justifying additional growth in the city. I like that paragraph two that you had there, and that's what 90% of this audit should be. That is, these auditors coming down with the mission to find savings. Now, let me give you an example. Your six sigma black belts out there in the world, they go to their customers and they say, if you've got, if you're at three sigma, I'll improve your process by 90%. So, we should be telling, the RFI, if you want to, should be, come in and we want you identifying our processes and we want you improving them by 50%. And you're not going to get that by spending a lot of time and effort comparing our processes to other cities. All that will be is justifying for additional growth or funds. Because government, and Mercer Island's typical on that, consultants, when we hire consultants, those consultants don't save us money, they cost us money. It needs more focus in saving taxpayers' money through more, through more efficient processes. And I don't see the emphasis on this presentation.
It's a wide and bold simplification of things, I think, but...
And again, it'll be helpful to know, if you don't find the comparison of the cities useful, it's not going to hurt my feelings, just nix it.
Yeah, and that's part of this, this is, you know, part of why we wanted to include a couple council members on this scoping committee, because the scope could turn out to look very different than what we've teed up. This is just a starting place, and we'll pull that committee together, and we'll map out a scope and get some consultants in here to talk about that.
Jane and Benson?
I guess I want to go back to the beginning. I was trying to remember in my head our discussion on this at the planning session, and I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the minutes. But I didn't walk away from there thinking, oh, man, we've got huge problems in this city, we've got to do an audit and find out how to get more efficient. I did not remember that at all, and I don't have that sense at all. And I wonder why the maintenance department was singled out beyond the fact that you thought there might be some efficiencies there, and it is a large department. But is there any other reason why that department was selected over any others?
It's just based on my judgment. I've been here a long time, I think I've got a pretty good feel for the city, how it's run, and the people. And I can tell you with 100% certainty, you're not going to find opportunities in fire or police, as an example. That's all the bulk of your budget is. And so, and I can say the same thing about other departments. I can tell you, you won't find opportunities to cut staff in maintenance, but that's, you're going to want someone independent of me to kind of look at that.
And I guess my thought when I saw this at June bill was, why? $90,000? I don't think we can afford this. I would like to table this entire discussion for another time, because I don't see a burning need, I don't hear complaints from the community, I don't hear people saying, oh, yeah, they're really fat in that department, we've got to cut. I don't know what the problem is, and I think it might make us feel good if we do an audit and find out we're A number one, or maybe even B, but I don't think it's worth $90,000 to find out. We can't, I don't think the city should be expending that kind of money when we have other needs. I just don't like the whole idea.
Do you want me to provide some perspective, or kind of reminder to the council on how this came up? No? Okay.
Well, Jane's asking.
Please.
Do you want me to take the flak? No, I mean, this was, this came out of a very lengthy discussion at the January planning session, and where the end result of that was that Chip said that we would do this review of one department. We were trying to figure out how we were going to, how we're going to have a meaningful council oversight of departments. I think we were all frustrated by a budget process, which, as smooth as it may be, we all finish up the budget process, we don't really feel like we know what's behind a lot of the numbers, because that's just the nature of what we do. So, we were, in January, last year, we were looking into this and trying to say, okay, how can we, how can we get the confidence that we know our city is operating smoothly? And we talked about various things, and ultimately, it was Chip's recommendation to do a performance audit on the maintenance department. We sort of had another, we got into it in June as to how that was going to look, because Chip is actually saying a lot of what you just said, and saying that in June that maybe we shouldn't be doing that. And then the council said, no, we want to continue forward on that in June. And I will just point out that one of the main drivers of that was Chip's budget forecast. That Chip had said very clearly that, in his considered opinion, we're going to need to go to the voters in 2016 to talk about revenue issues. And the council felt very strongly that before we go to the voters and talk about revenue issues, we better be able to show that we took a very strong look at expenditures. And that was, that was driving a lot of the council's thinking in both January and June. So, this is where we're at right now. We, I mean, Chip's expenditure forecasts, I don't think have changed significantly. I think we're still looking at potential revenue issues. And I think that there's going to be, it's incumbent upon us to be able to demonstrate to the public that we have, we're good stewards of the public's money. And it, there's absolutely no question in my mind that if this auditor is good at all, they're going to provide recommendations which are going to be helpful to staff. That's, I mean, if they're good, then they will do it, because anyone who thinks, anyone who's ever managed an organization, if they believe, they sit there and believe that they've got it all perfect, they're completely deluding themselves. And myself included, and any one of us who's managed a company, it doesn't work that way. Other people can come in and have some really good ideas, and we shouldn't be shy to do that. And, yeah, $90,000 is a lot of money. But one has to believe that if a good auditor would be able to come up with some recommendations, we will easily recoup that and more over a relatively short period of time.
I hope so. I also would like to, I've been in the process, I've been involved in a company that was audited too, and there's a morale issue, there's the concern about, oh, the suits are here to check us out. And anyway, there is a factor that does occur, and just need to acknowledge that.
Benson, Debbie, Mike?
I'm definitely speaking in favor of approving the performance audit. And my recollection, Jane, was simply that this was heavily discussed, and that a great concern was raised regarding making sure that we did do our homework and that, you know, we were fiscally responsible before we talk about any possibility of revenue issues. Because there was a lot of, you know, I think, I recall that this was also being, we spent a lot of time talking about personnel issues. Obviously, personnel is probably the biggest cost for the city. So, I think we wanted to make sure that our departments were lean. And to Councilmember Cyril's point, I think there is a feeling that we want to make sure we are lean. So, I'm not sure about this idea of that it's just going to result in increasing the cost or enlarging the city budget, because I think the intent, a lot of the discussion was to make sure that we are as lean as possible. But, you know, so I think that's going to be certainly something that we would want the consultant to look at. I would also, even if there's only two council members on the committee or the ones who are involved in looking, I think every council member needs to perhaps chime in as far as what they would like to see as far as the scope of the performance audit. And so, hopefully, that would be encouraged.
In hearkening back to the discussions that we had in June, for me, one of the themes in there was, of course, the efficiency factor, but it was also what I would call the effectiveness factor. Because it's not only about cutting costs, but it's also about making sure that you're delivering services and the right services at the right cost. And if we're going to go forward with this, I do want to see an element in there that is talking about how we deliver services. Are we delivering them in the best possible way to best serve our community? Because ultimately, that is our responsibility. So, the extent to which any audit is backward-looking or presumes that the business continues as is, without including a component that says there might be new processes, there might be new systems and tools, and going forward, but also then tying that directly to what is the cost and the level of service that's provided, I'm going to be more open to it. But if this is just a retrospect on the business as it's been and how we envision it to be as it has been, I'm far less comfortable. This has to be about us starting to look at new ways to deliver the business.
So, again, and the deputy mayor said it best, this, the way this is written, with all the comparisons to the other city, is designed to justify tax increases. And that's what this will, that's what the output of this will be. We need an audit that is purely focused on improving our processes and not comparing our city to other cities, which ultimately will do what the deputy mayor said it would, would justify to the citizens why we're right in asking for additional tax increases.
Teri?
Just, like Benson, I'm really supportive of this. I appreciate how creative the process, the selection process that you've articulated. I think that that's really an appropriate way to approach it, because I do think that there's some diversity of opinion and some additional conversation will be able to scope it well. I like the idea of getting an opportunity to get in front of a consultant, have a conversation with a consultant, have an idea whether it's a good fit or whether they have some of the ideas and experience that are going to help us get from this what we hope. And I'd like to just say, I disagree that this is about putting ourselves in a position to raise taxes. Instead, I genuinely see this as a good business practice to really understand how we can be more lean, how we can provide services appropriately for the right dollar amount, and how we can be forward-looking, making sure that we're making the right choices to prepare ourselves for the future.
I'm going to suggest something, and that is that we begin with this more detailed analysis portion of this, with two council members having this, the beginnings of the deep dive with Jason's group and others on staff. deep dive with Jason's group and others on staff, to get to a point where they've got a better feel for how this is going to go, and that they report back to council sometime in the not-too-distant future with what they're finding. And we defer on the high-level look, which, I mean, Chip's expressed that he could do it himself, he's expressed that it's not something he's asking for, it's something he's trying to be responsive to our need for. So, I'm suggesting we put that aside for right now and get through this first involvement of council members in this process, and let them come back to us with their recommendation on how they feel about things. Would that be okay? I'm seeing some nodding of heads.
Yeah, and if we do that, I mean, we could, you could wait on the appropriation until we report back.
If we do that.
Then you can all be more comfortable with, here's the scope that you're going to be buying into.
I'd be happy with that.
Debbie?
Let's just say scope and objectives.
Good point.
Okay. Counselor, I'm going to just look for a show of hands, who would want to volunteer for this duty, and then I'll go back and kibbitz with staff as to who we actually have take that role. So, Jane, okay. So, not Terry, not Debbie. Okay. As will Mike, but he's signing up, so, okay.
All right. Okay, thank you.
That's true. Yeah, that's true. Okay. Thank you. So, is it going to be?
We're going to decide.
Okay, we'll figure it out. Gotcha.
Good job.
Thank you very much. We come to council member absences. We have none. Any upcoming absences of which we should be aware? All right. Planning schedule, Noel.
Planning schedule, the main thing I would like, well, two things, just one question came up today that I just wanted to make sure I answered to everyone, and that was just, when people look ahead at the planning schedule and the order of agenda items on here, this isn't the order for the meeting necessarily. What we do as a staff is, going into each meeting agenda, we sit down and look at the items and try and sort out what order will make the most sense at the meeting. It'll depend on, you know, which things are going to have, maybe outside presenters show up, what things might be related or linked, and in what order should those be presented. So, when you do look at this, know that this won't be the exact order at the meeting, at the next meeting that's coming up. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we are, as you know, working with MICA on a draft lease, and our plan right now is to come back with a first reading of that for November 16th.
And that will, it was agreed?
Yes, it will include a briefing on what is an advisory vote, and what does that involve?
Well, it'll include the, you know, the pros and cons of advisory vote, and I assume that will also include the motion for an advisory vote. That, that formal.
That's not what I came away with when you asked us to put that information together, no.
Well, I mean, why, it's the decision point. Of course, that's what it means. Why would I just want to talk about it? Why would Benson and I just want to talk about it?
Frankly, that's the... The discussion was to simply gather information regarding what it would involve, as far as the advisory vote.
I'm sure Mike did, I mean, all we're talking about is providing a sentence, if I'm not mistaken here, right? You're, I mean, you're saying, we're going to have the information, at the end of that information, I mean, I can cook that up right now, it's, you know, I move that we have an advisory vote. Are you looking for something above and beyond?
Well, I just, the formality that the staff prepares the pros and cons to an advisory vote will be concluded with said motion.
I don't think it's up to staff to develop pros and cons of an advisory vote. If you want to put in the pros, and you find, and I'm sure there's maybe, might be a couple of us who might want to opine on the cons, I think all that's being asked is, what is an advisory vote, and what it's going to cost the city, and when could it be held? So, that's, and what's the legal significance? And that's about all your, you know, we're obviously not going to be passing a resolution on November 16th, because that requires the exact wording of the advisory vote, and a whole bunch of other stuff, which, no way in the world that's going to be ready for the 16th until, and there's no reason for staff to even take the time to do that until there's four people on this council who are interested in doing it. So, you'll get your chance to pontificate about advisory votes, and you can get some staff input on what an advisory vote is, but I think that's about what you're going to get.
Okay.
That's all I had on planning schedule.
All right.
Just a suggestion. January's coming up, I really think it would be good to get the planning session on the calendar as soon as possible.
Okay, good idea.
My only comment is that...
Except we don't know who's coming.
It requires knowing who's going to be there.
Who's going to be invited?
So...
That might be on the November 16th.
We'll work on that in November.
Or not.
Okay. Board appointments, we have none. Council member reports. Jane, you want to go first?
Sure. The Sisters City Association is expecting 17 students from our sister city. They're arriving on Saturday, along with three adult chaperones. And you've all received an invitation to a potluck and sounders party to welcome them on Sunday, this coming Sunday, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the community center. And then, on Monday, from 5:30 to 6:30, there is a reception here at City Hall for them. And please RSVP to alley by tomorrow. And you're all welcome, it's a great opportunity to celebrate our sister city exchange, and see some of the folks that were here in July. Also, I don't know if you noticed that there was an obituary for Ron Dickinson, who died fairly recently. He was city attorney for, city of Mercer Island for 22 years, and died rather suddenly. He lived on Mercer Island for a number of years, and there will be a celebration for him, but the date has not yet been set on Mercer Island. He became a federal judge in 1994, and yes, he moved away from the area then, but he was here for 25 years. I wanted to comment about the community dinner, it was really wonderful. Kudos to Mercer Island Food Revolution and Let's Move, it was great. Good food, and I started reading labels as well. I attended the PSIC Transportation Policy Board meeting on October 7th. There was one part of the discussion about immigration involved parking, and the fact that there's going to be the permit parking pilot program. And I mentioned that permit parking that is open to everyone will not help us any more than a parking lot that's open to everyone, if those permits are given out to everyone and the slots are filled by 7:30. So, anyway, my point was accepted. And then, on October 15th, there was a park subcommittee. We discussed a whole bunch of items. Field usage, always, is a big issue. We got some project updates on Luther, Cockins Point, and Cockins Landing. And things are really busy with the parks. And I think that's all. I also attended the Advanced Transportation Technologies Conference, which I thought was very interesting. So, I, when I turn it over to whoever's next, there were a lot of meetings, I was so busy.
Carrie.
Just one note, I also attended the park subcommittee meeting. There are a lot of really great ideas in store for our parks, but there tends to be a perennial issue of funding. Being able to move forward as quickly as we'd like, take care of things in a timely manner at a time when it makes sense. So, one of the things that occurred to me as I was leaving, not as a staff takeaway, but as a citizen takeaway, was the potential to perhaps reinstate a foundation that would support the parks in our community. There was, in years past, a foundation that provided a specific vehicle for people to have an impact in their park infrastructure in our community, and that's no longer a focused opportunity. Of course, people are welcome to make a donation to support our parks. But it's something that occurred to me that it might be something that we should consider as community members for a community where our parks are such a vital part of our, of our daily lives.
Yeah.
So, I've already mentioned the thing about Sound Cities. Benson, Jane, and I attended the first meeting of the, what's called the Joint Commission, of the Planning and Design Commission. I, just so the rest of the council is aware of that, I don't know if any other council members were there for the meeting to watch that. My sense was that they are feeling, after that first meeting, quite overwhelmed. One of the first questions they said is, they asked Scott to go back to Carrie and ask them whether they could extend the moratorium more than six more months, given how much time that they thought they would need to do it. I think that it is going to be really critical for staff, and I've already communicated this to Noel and to Scott, and to Kirsten, that the discussion be focused, so that the Planning Commission and Design Commission can really start seeing the forest through the trees, and not get lost in this process. And so, they don't feel, because right now, my sense is they're sitting there saying, oh my God, we got to write this whole code from, you know, the first paragraph to the last paragraph, and how are we going to do that? And where do we start? And what I had suggested was that, start out with, you know, have the Planning and Design Commission in consultation with the public and staff, pick the 10 most critical issues, or start somewhere, five issues, 15, whatever it is, so they can start figuring out a schedule for going forward and dealing with it. And if you get through those 10, then go to the next ones if you want to, but at least you have a process. Because right now, it wasn't clear to them, and it definitely wasn't clear to me that we have a process. The other observation I would make on that is that if we dump impact fees on the Planning Commission right now, they're just going to implode, if we actually expect them to do a thorough job on it. So, what I've asked Noel, and again, to talk with Carrie about, is whether there's any way, if this council was so inclined, to short-circuit the impact fee thing, sort of run it through Planning Commission on a very limited review basis, and then have it come back to the council, and let the council do any heavy lifting that might need to be done on that, in recognition that otherwise, Planning Commission's not going to get to it in all likelihood till late in the spring. And if, so we're going to run into some issues, I've got the feeling, if that's, if we're going to wait for that. So, I, hopefully, you know, Noel, you can get back to the council on some of that, but I think it's, that was my observations from that meeting, and Benson and Jane can opine as they see appropriate.
Noel, anything on that?
No, Carrie and Scott and I are working on a plan on impact fees, and I think we can get them, I think, right now, I think is we can get them done in a timely way, without waiting till the spring. And then, on the overall picture, as you know, at the next Joint Commission meeting, we're working with them on a work plan. Karen Reed's engaged in helping us get through that with them, and get them to a work plan. So, I think, I think we still, I think we can meet the spring. I know initially, they were overwhelmed with what they had in front of them, but I think, I think we're plans shaped up that will help us get there. So, you'll hear more about that as we finish up the work plan and report back to you on that.
Okay. Mike? Debbie?
Well, I want to continue on that one. So, if I understand correctly, the new staff is working on helping the planning, the Joint Planning and Design Commission come up with a way to get through what seems to be a significant piece of work. Okay. The other thing too, is I would like to suggest that before we were to consolidate, or I don't know quite what the right word is, in terms of the impact fees, I would want to get the feedback from the Planning Commission before we sort of perfunctorily took it out of their hands, or limited their reach. I think they serve an important function, and I would certainly not want to short-circuit the process unless they were comfortable. Actually, short-circuit isn't even the right word. I'm just concerned that we need to let the Planning Commission make those decisions or make some recommendations first. So, I too was at the Parks and Rec meeting, I think Jane did a great job. We also touched very briefly on the library, because Bruce Fletcher is the staff liaison to the Library Committee. So, I was there briefly for the meeting. I believe I was there for about the first hour. I know Benson was there for a while, Jane was there, Dan was there. One of the things that I think would be very helpful is if we had just a short summary of what the plan is, what are the proposed changes to the library, closure, interim services, et cetera. We've all probably taken a deep breath, we've been, some of us have been away from the details of the process in the last six months or so. But, I mean, to me, I was surprised to find out that it was essentially going to be closed for a month, which means that the changes are largely cosmetic, and I did receive a number of questions from people, what happened to the HVAC system, what happened to upgrading the electrical, et cetera. So, clearly, they have the questions, I have the questions, and I think the community needs the chance to take a look at it and see where the recommendations sit right now. Lots of good questions about the extent to which the library, the available resources would remain, or perhaps be increased in line with the original bond measure, levy method, measure. So, good questions being asked, and I think an update to the community deserved.
Just to respond to that, Kirsten, would you mind, please, working with Bruce, and get a good summary out that council can see as to the status and the plan? Okay, thank you.
And then, we had a utility board meeting last week, where we did go ahead and we reviewed the proposed sewer project, the Anatai Sewer Project. And there has been, I think, a fair amount of community interest in that. There's several different alternatives that are being looked at at this point. Mercer Island does need to weigh in on what those options are. There's many, some are 1A, 1B, 1C, et cetera. But I would call out that there's significant points of potential impact. The first one is Luther Burbank, whether or not any of this sewer work actually goes through Luther Burbank, the impact it has to the park, to landscaping, to wetlands, et cetera. That needs to be carefully considered, of course. Some of this goes along north Mercer and other important or critical arterials, what that would do to traffic if they were to take those routes. Another component is the potential for it to go alongside the pedestrian and bike path, which on one hand could be, could impact use, but if well-negotiated, could potentially deliver us a better path. Anybody who's walked, run, cycled on it knows that there's, you know, it could use their help right now. So, I think it's imperative that we all reach out to the respective communities that have an immediate, but also just general interest in this, because it will be significant.
Have they eliminated the offshore option?
They have not eliminated any options at this point. They have a list of criteria that's about this long, of course, a large algebraic formula that they'll use to evaluate, but of course, public input needs to be provided, in terms of the impact and opportunity that the island would see. Regarding transportation, I was at the Advanced Transportation Summit, fabulous, great. I would also call out that there will be another event coming up on October 29th, for those who are interested, it's being sponsored by the Seattle Times and Microsoft, looking again at some of the congestion issues that we have. It's out at University of Washington. I've got the link if anybody has it in specific interest. So, with that, I think...
Sorry, can I just jump in real quick on the Anatai Sewer Project? I just wanted to alert you, I should have mentioned this when I was talking planning schedule. We do have a study session on that plan for the full council on November 16th, and I also anticipate at that point, we'll be talking with you about a recommendation for, because the city still needs to weigh in with what is our official position on options. We need to, we need to put that letter into King County. So, we'll be talking with you about what direction do we want to go with that as well on the 16th.
I would encourage us to then send an invitation to the utility board to be present as well.
Okay, good idea.
Benson?
Not much more, but I guess, as far as the sewer project, I know you can voice your comments or send your... comments or send your comments online, so I guess I would encourage the public to do that. As far as the library presentation, it'd be helpful to get that background information, but I think the, one thing I took away was that at least the people in the audience, they were generally pleased with the cosmetic changes and that it appeared that the King County library system, at least again, cosmetically, they accepted a number of the changes or responded positively to a number of the things that the community had expressed, you know, over a year ago. So that was a good, and Gary Wozniak is basically, he can walk on water right now, so everybody seems to be very happy with him. The other thing is, you know, I know that probably people think that there are too many lawyers, but one thing that Jane and I were at this open house, and so there's a new law firm down in Mercer Island, so adding to the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce and just to that economic vitality, so, but again, unfortunately, there were lawyers, so anyway.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, that's it.
They have their own business.
Yeah.
Okay, so back to me, a couple bits of news on the sustainability front. We had a meeting of the King County Climate Collaborative last week, it's the K4C, hosted by Dow, and good, certainly good progress that's being made on a number of fronts, a number of subcommittees have been formed around the topics of interest to the cities and some significant progress is being made on those, it was good to see that. On a related note, they were handing out copies of AWC article, which was recently published, that labels Mercer Island as becoming a green jewel on Lake Washington. So kind of nice to have that sort of exposure for the city.
And thanks to our mayor and a great big photo of him.
They got his photo in there, so yeah, that's all worthwhile.
With the solar panels.
Are you autographing?
Okay. On a slightly less productive note, the UTC got back to us about our request that the coal strip plants be part of a broader, it's coal strip three and four be analyzed as well as one and two, and they said no, at least not as part of this. So that was the takeaway from the UTC with regards to that. And finally, I think others of you, not just me, got a pile of letters from high school students who are engaging in civic engagement and letting their electeds know what they think should be done. So I was appreciative of getting these letters, and I'm going to actually, once things settle down here, two weeks from now or more, we'll get in touch with the teacher and see if there's a chance for one or more of us perhaps to go visit the class, might be kind of fun to go and have a chat with the students about the issues that they've raised. So I will make that outreach. Well, you can have some of mine. Actually, I think I've got one of Jane's, too. I had looked and noticed the...
I don't know if we all got the same topic, but the ones that I received...
Jane, I got at least one for you, I am sure, so...
Well, the one that I received, the set that I received was particularly, specifically about Island Crest Way and the road diet. And I know at some point there'd been a conversation about going back and looking over the last, I think it's been what, four years, approximately three, four years, in terms of what the accident rate is, et cetera. So is that something that has been done, that is planned to be done, or other?
So that has been done to, and in informal way, but not by city staff. So I've done some of that work myself and consider it solid, but I'm not sure that others would consider it solid because I...
Not city staff fetid.
That's right. But I can tell you that the accident rate's down dramatically since that was done, per my own analysis of it, down by 60%.
Wow. This goes back to our conversation earlier about statistics and dashboard reports. Yeah, but this is important, this goes back to the conversation that we had about, you know, statistics, community. To me, that, there's the potential for something very informative, I don't want to presume to know what or speculate at this point, but that's...
Yeah, it's big news.
So I'd say that we should, we should see if that's city sanctified.
Shattered on rooftops, yeah.
That's all I have for this evening, if nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.